We'll do the meet and greet after.
Yeah.
Rather.
Oh, yeah.
You'd rather just have the kind of meet and greet after?
I still do.
After?
After he finishes, we can take a break.
Right.
And then people finish.
Well, some smoking by school.
Oh, wow. It's just something, you know. Thank you for your nice host.
Problem.
Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 22nd. I'd like to call the regular organizational meeting of the Board of Education to order. This evening, we have Mr. Philip Dwyer present, Ms. Jessica Gerber, Mrs. Maxim Cannelli, Mr. Convertito, Mr. Lou, myself, Pamela Iacono, Mr. Fadabin, Mr. Carey's on his way, Mrs. Brand, Dr. Tidal, and two members from the high school, Sarah Want, Wyatt, and Stephanie Tishara. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a special guest with us. We have a presentation from the Commissioner of Education, Stefan Pryor. And, Dr. Tidal, I will turn it over to you for an introduction.
Thank you very much. I know we want to get right into this, but the state of Connecticut is fortunate to have a new Commissioner of Education who began work in October, Stefan Pryor, whom our paths have already crossed several times. He's on, if you haven't seen the media, out of a listening tour, going to various schools, school districts around the state, and really has been asking to hear from us. So, he came to one of our Superintendent's Network meetings and asked us, what do you think the state is doing well, and what do you think the state isn't doing well? And the first part of the discussion was a lot shorter than the second, but he's been willing to listen. He was at the, some of you that were at the CAPE CAPS convention, he spoke at that, and then he decided to hang around near the Starbucks where I cornered him again for half an hour. So, he's been very accessible and...
...forms of competition.
That's right, absolutely. So, we are delighted to have him here in Fairfield, and the plan is for him to give a brief presentation, but then basically for him to hear from you. What's on your mind? Ask questions about education in the state, what the issues are facing Fairfield. It's really part of an opportunity to listen, and I'll lob some things in if we need to, but I think he basically wants to hear from you. So, without further ado, Commissioner Pryor, the microphone is yours.
Excellent. Well, Dr. Tidal, it's really a pleasure, and it's, it has been a terrific series of conversations we've had, Superintendent. We have, we have definitively started to exchange ideas, and I'm so grateful to the entire board for your gracious reception here today and the opportunity to address you. More importantly, though, as the Superintendent said, I would really like to hear from you just about the issues that you face. I know a number of you were elected recently. Thank you.
Closer.
Very good.
All right.
I know a number of you were elected recently and seated recently, and you have new ideas and new thoughts, and veteran members of the board have experienced this district and have issues, concerns, notions of every, of every form regarding the future of this district and the future of our state as it pertains to public education. But it's a great opportunity for me. I just want to note that your Superintendent is really an exemplar among superintendents in his commitment to statewide reform simultaneous with fulfilling his duties ably as Superintendent right here. He chairs the Governor's Early Education Cabinet, and it's, it's a rare thing that a Superintendent of Schools primarily charged, at least traditionally charged, with K-12 education also focuses, and does so very effectively, on the years that precede kindergarten. But your Superintendent has done that in several jurisdictions, and you know well, he is good work revamping the early childhood system right here in this district with the expansion to three- and four-year-olds from the four-year-old program and other efforts which seem to be working to create an even more effective early childhood system right here, providing greater opportunities for parents and, and young children. It's really terrific. Also, in other districts where the Superintendent has served, there have been some very novel programs, and I think when others involved, from the Health and Human Services perspective, from the traditional childcare sector, look at a Superintendent of Schools, they looks, looks, look, look at, look at David with, with puzzlement at first, and then with recognition that there's real expertise as to the importance of a continuum of service from early childhood through, not only to grade 12, but as they say, to grade, grade 20 and beyond, to college and career life. The fact that there's such a, a knowledge base here in your town is, is really a tremendous resource to you. I've also begun to hear about some of the issues in the K-12 system here, of course, and it's extremely important to me that we are, in the course of our listening tour, in the early phase of this commissionership, visiting districts with various needs and various requirements. Certainly, a very high priority for us at the, at the State Department of Education, that higher-performing districts in our state continue to receive our attention, but the right kind of attention. David and I had a conversation about the fact that we're conscious of, of the fact that issuance of circulars and regulatory requirements from our department can be essential in that the, the requirements may be fulfilling a federal mandate, and they may be, they may offer important guidance. They also may be a hindrance, especially to high-performing districts where you all may be prepared to innovate and to achieve even greater levels of performance. We're very interested in the new department, in hearing about regulatory barriers, anything else that serves as a hindrance where we may be able to clear the way for you. And you should know that there's a symmetry to our work. Where schools seem to be underperforming, where districts seem to be underperforming and not fulfilling their potential, not serving students at optimal levels, we think that's, that may be where our, our attention is, is best paid with intensity. So, you'll see that we're going to be aiming to focus our efforts in that way. Having said that, drawing those distinctions is not enough. There are certainly ways that we can be helpful to you all. I'm sure that you have ideas and thoughts on things that we ought to do and things that we ought not do, and I'm very eager to hear about those. And it's all in pursuit of higher performance in all of our districts for all of our children. We should not rest on our laurels. This is a high-performing district. You all are doing a marvelous job in many, if not most cases, of maintaining the level of education that we all want for our children and that you all have set as your objective. There's a track record of success, and this Superintendent continues to carry out that track record of success. It is the case, though, as a state, as a state as a whole, we are not as high-flying as we, as we may, in the absence of data, think we are. The NAEP data recently came out, the national test data on the performance of all 50 states, and Connecticut received its data at fourth and eighth grades, reading and mathematics. And you may have heard a lot of things about the data. We continue to have the unfortunate distinction of having the largest achievement gap in the country. The reason we have such an achievement gap, and that is a profound problem, is not, is not because we soar so high and continue to gain that the gap widens at the top, if you will. Unfortunately, we're getting outpaced by other states. And I drew some of this data in order to chat with you a little bit today, just as a reminder. I'm sure many of you read the, the NAEP data when it was reported, but let's take a look at eighth-grade mathematics. The following states are beating us, many of them because they're gaining at a better rate. Ready for this? Massachusetts, I don't know about you, but I'm tired of hearing about how Massachusetts is beating Connecticut, and there's no good reason for it. But as David will tell you, consistently over the years, that's been the case. So, they're doing some things right that we aren't, and we need to learn some lessons. You may know that I most recently, I arrived from New Jersey. I served as a Deputy Mayor of, of a city in New Jersey, Newark, New Jersey. New Jersey is a fine state. It's, it's really a marvelous state, but they're beating us too in eighth-grade mathematics. I have to tell you, I'm hoping that this district will help me vindicate my choice to come back to Connecticut and that we will beat New Jersey. There's no reason why not. North Dakota and South Dakota are beating Connecticut, by the way. And another state I thought might be of interest, Texas, is beating Connecticut in eighth-grade mathematics. I just chose that sampling for you to say that really, we ought to aspire to be number one. The fact of the matter is Connecticut is per capita the wealthiest state in the Union. I'm sure in all of our view, it's the finest state in the Union. We ought to aspire for greater. We have stagnant test scores on the NAEP. We are, we are flat, and I think that here, with your Board Chair's leadership, with your Superintendent's leadership, this can be one of the places where we aspire for and we actually achieve even greater. Your good efforts to date have proven that it's possible for us to attain high levels of performance. Let's take it to another level. I'd love to know, once again, how I can get, how I can help the department get out of the way and how I can focus our attention on the right things to help you achieve that goal. Thank you very, very much. [applause]
Does anybody have any questions?
And comments would even be more preferred.
Why don't we work down the line, Mrs. Brand?
May I?
Sure.
Is it okay?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
There you go. Came to the right meeting.
Great, thank you very much. It makes no taking easier.
There you go.
I'll wait when you're ready.
I'm ready.
First of all, thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome. I have several. I think Dr. Tidal may have sent them to you already, but do you have a five-year plan in particular that you have in mind to help move us forward?
The, the state is required to produce a five-year plan. The, the latest plan, or the, the most recent, is coming out of date, so we will produce one. I'm a month and a half into my job, so I haven't done it yet. We are very quick, however, and I really am here to listen to you all as to what you think for Fairfield would be the right elements of the plan. So, may, may I reverse the question for a moment? What do you think ought to be in there?
One of the things that is of great concern to me has been, obviously, no child left behind, but there has been an emphasis, I think, in education for a result. I don't think that's where we want to be. My feeling is that in terms of teachers, I think teachers should be evaluated in terms of the strategies that they use, and I think there should be a tremendous emphasis in professional development. I think we need, need to better clearly define what that looks like, what is a good teacher, and then I think, once we do that, the professional development to achieve it, to me, it's the, it's the skill set that someone brings to the table, that no matter what kind of student is before them, they're able to best meet their needs in order to get them from A to B. Now, that's with the expectation that not all things with education are consistent, but, because we're dealing with people. But in my view, if we're going to look at a teacher evaluation, I do not want to see it outcome-based. I really do want to see them evaluated on the strategies that they use.
Thank you very much.
Do you have anything? Go ahead.
Thank you as well for joining us tonight. It's quite a privilege. My question, and actually, going to tax on Mrs. Brand's thoughts, is there any thoughts or consideration for mechanisms to help us measure teacher effectiveness? And is the state considering anything that is out there that's been worked on? For example, the measuring effective teaching program at the Gates Foundation, which is a program that'll be wrapping up in December. Is that something that we possibly could model evaluation and possibly even pay, pay scale in the future?
There is a, there is a process underway to determine teacher and administrator evaluation, I should note, which is also very important. There are exemplars throughout the state regarding evaluation systems. We're evaluating, we're evaluating them to see what will work best. There's a process by statute in which there's a, an advisory committee called the PEAK Committee that is to bring stakeholders together, offer advice, and then the State Board of Education will adopt the measures related to evaluation. We're in the midst of that process, so I'm not prejudging it. I'm pouring into it and looking for best practices that can help guide us. I should note that Steve Wright, who is a State Board of Education member, is here tonight. Very kind of him to join us, and he's joined on a number of listening tour stops, so we are, we are listening on this subject with intensity.
I'll, I'll jump in.
Please.
One, one of my concerns is something I'd like to see the state emphasize, and unfortunately, with the test score mania, you know, we can get so fixated on that, but I would like to make sure the state emphasizes a well-rounded education for every child, that it's not just in the tested areas. In Fairfield, we're very proud of our programs that are not in tested areas, not limited to the arts, the music, and in this push for measuring everything based on test scores and on reading and math, which are critically important, my take on is that higher achieving districts don't want to lose those things. We want to actually enhance those things, and if the state's going to push for greater achievement for all children, I just want to be sure that, you know, my voice on this would be to make sure that we're, that we're covering the waterfall on what an educated citizen for the 21st century is and not limited to just what's on the national assessment of educational progress. That would be my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fadabin?
I'd like to thank the Commissioner for taking the time and initiative to come to the districts and actually learn and listen to some of the boards and see what they have to say.
My great pleasure. Thank you for having me.
We certainly appreciate it. I know I do. I think what makes Fairfield unique is sort of the history of supporting education it's had in the past. It always has, in my opinion, in my tenure on the board, as well as my life in Fairfield, which I grew up in Fairfield.
Excellent.
They've always supported education. They historically always have, and I believe it's part of the citizenry and part of the public support and the parental involvement that makes our, our, our district unique and perform very well. And I'm certainly happy in a sense to hear some of your comments that it's not your intent to impede that, the district, if they're well performing, and the focus on the underperforming districts in the state, which I think needs to be done and should be done. And that was one of my concerns, is whether the state's going to have influence which would impede us in maintaining our high achieving ability and going further. To that line of reasoning, I would exercise, I would comment on some thoughts with recent legislation under the Race to the Top provisions that the federal government had promoted in an effort to get districts to change certain legis, certain laws in order to have the hope of getting funding. It appears, I don't know if Connecticut ever really did receive funds for any of those projects, but they have competed and passed legislation in the hope of getting those funds, and to the extent that some of that legislation actually harms some districts or makes their, their work more difficult, I would exercise caution and applications to Race to the Top because the likelihood of getting funding may be not realistic and therefore not worth the changes that are mandated. So, that's, that's one comment I would have, but I certainly hope we can continue in this district achieving great things as well as...
I do as well. Thank you.
Mr. Lou? Mr. Convertito? Mrs. Cannelli?
Two questions. First, do, just to go off of Mr. Fadabin's comment, do you see Connecticut pursuing Race to the Top funding?
Currently, there are no further rounds of Race to the Top funding for the K-12 domain, so no, on that basis. I, I should note that on the early childhood front, we did just apply for the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge, and I think you'd all be very, very pleased with the content of that application. It seeks to expand early childhood opportunities and to create a quality rating system so that we're assured that we have higher-quality early childhood offerings. We are awaiting word back from the federal government. It'll be, you know, probably plural, plural months, but it could be closer to a month that we receive word. It depends on when they've completed their assessment of all of the state applicants. So, that's the information for you.
Will that be a rating based only on the public? School-provided early childhood, or is that...
No, it would actually seek to incorporate other providers to create a higher-quality system as a whole, including KIF and KIN providers, so providers in the, providers in the community, and to integrate a system, which you can rest assured with, with David helping to provide input, would be done with sensitivity to the high-quality providers that already exist and would seek to elevate those providers that are, that are not at that level.
And a second question. As far as I know, Texas is one of the states, I have to come back to that one, Texas is one of the states that's not subscribing to the Common Core standards in curriculum. Isn't that correct?
I actually don't know. Common Core is a, is a, is a system that's in process.
Right.
So, I, I don't know what Texas's decision-making has been. I guess we do have to pay a little bit more attention to them, given the stats, but no system has yet incorporated Common Core in its totality because the assessments have not yet been devised and implemented. So, what's happened is you've got curricular frameworks, curricula are being generated on that basis, and there are these additional segments of work yet to come.
Which was my second question, was how, do you see that forming in that five-year plan, or does the five-year plan have to go ahead? I would assume because so much work still has to be done with the Common Core.
I think I'll answer it this way. Whatever happens with the Common Core, there are, there are national, there are national efforts to implement the Common Core, which are voluntary efforts, so-called consortia of states that are producing some of the key elements like the assessments. So, Connecticut is part of what's called the Smarter Balance Consortium, and there's another one called PARK, but it's, it remains to be seen what timeline they will produce and adhere to. I'm not judging that yet because we're, my team is just getting into the process with them, but if they were to lag for any reason, not saying they are, we would proceed with our plans, whether contained within the formal official five-year plan or otherwise. We'll run the state's education system together, districts and State Department of Education, independent of how they do.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah. Thanks very much. One question I had when you're talking about, you know, New Jersey, Massachusetts, North and South Dakota, Texas, what are they doing that Connecticut isn't? I mean, what can we learn from them?
Right. We are, we are studying that intensively. The NAEP data is only a couple weeks old at this point, so we are just about to undertake some of that, that examination. I will tell you that many states do a far better job of supporting and intervening in lower-performing schools than we do and working in partnership with lower-performing districts than we do. A lot of the movement that you see in test score data can be attained at the lower performance levels because there's, there's more room to move. And Connecticut, unfortunately, has not embraced some of the strategies that other states have. Beyond that, if you look at Massachusetts, David may well be well-informed on Massachusetts' work. There is very tight alignment, and there's been intensive work done around curriculum, instruction, professional development, and assessment. And there's a, there's a, there is a synchronized system where many educators in that system are knowledgeable about how all the pieces fit together. That level of coherence is something we should, we should strive for at every performance level in all of our schools, and I think we can do far better.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
When you come last in the circle, that means that I'm the last one to thank you for coming, but I appreciate very much that you are making Fairfield part of your listening tour.
Thank you. It's just as meaningful coming last. Thank you.
One comment. I don't know that it's a question. I don't know that it can be responded to, but the, the, more and more government is putting down more prescriptive policy requirements, which in some respect, I think, like room for the, no child left behind and whatnot. It seems, though, it forces the staff to get involved in writing policy, check, creating the plan, check, and referring to the bullying policy this evening that we'll look at, hiring a coordinator, check, appointing a specialist, check. We got it all done, and we met the minimum requirements, but does it really help us move the needle when it comes to changing a school climate?
And for all of those checks, you don't receive a check from us for that.
True. I, I thought if I kept saying the word "check," you'd think that you should send us one, but I guess not.
I knew that was coming.
So, so I guess the comment I would make is that I think we have to look at what will move the needle when it comes to improving school climate or school performance, and that the, the nature of where policy is going today, I don't think it's really helping local boards achieve that. And so, that's a comment.
Yes.
I have one, a question, but that's a comment.
Oh, please.
No, go ahead.
No, I, I would simply say that, as I, as I referenced in my remarks, I don't think that we ought to operate as a checklist State Department of Education, pushing out circulars that require make-work on the part of districts. Now, again, I'm very careful in making these comments. Not every regulation is make-work. Some are essential. Not every circular is without reason. Some are profoundly important. But where there are outdated or irrelevant or even barrier-creating circulars and regulations, we want to know about it, and especially those districts that are achieving high performance and especially those districts and schools that are gaining year to year, we want to know how to get out of your way. So, I'd be very eager for specific examples from you. You've already cited some of this evening, but I'd be interested in more as to, as to what can help you there.
I suspect our staff have some thoughts on that.
By the way, may I say one other thing? There's such a distinction between a curricular framework and aligned curriculum, instruction, professional development, assessment system. That is the kind of state support that can, that can help a district and districts plural achieve gains. There's such a distinction between that and what might be perceived in some cases as make-work. That's, that's where we want to, we want to clear the way on the, on the second category.
Okay, good. Thank you. The question I have is, you have been here only 30 days, but if you put your crystal ball on and said, "I'm here 18 months," what do you think happiness is for you 18 months from now that says, "I'm glad I moved from Jersey because the following things changed"? And how could, what, what expectations would you have of Fairfield to say, "And Fairfield helped us 18 months from now because they did X"?
Well, the first, the first sign that would be, that would be encouraging is if, if you invited me back, I came, and it was, it was yet again a productive conversation. I'd be very grateful for that. I truly would, by the way. David is going to be working with us periodically. I should note, clearly, he manages to fit it all in. I don't know how much he sleeps, but on the early childhood front, so we'll have a chance to dialogue on that and many other things, and I will turn to David for advice and counsel. But, but that would be, that would be number one. I also would hope that on a number of the key themes that you're going to hear us talk about around the state, the, the drawing of distinctions between state involvement that's helpful and state involvement that can be a barrier is a theme. You'll hear other themes that we'll talk about. Talent. Professional talent in our system is our most important resource, and finding a way for the State Department to be involved in a way that contributes to Fairfield's and to other districts' pursuit of the finest administrative talent and the finest teacher talent, we'll be working to, to assess ways in which we can... talent. We'll be working to assess ways in which we can do that. So, in 18 months, I would hope that as to the major themes, you'll see progress, initial signs that we're headed in the right direction.
Okay. Thank you.
One point on that is our state certification regulations often are barriers to bringing in talent from out of state.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
And I think if we reviewed those, and what those barriers are, and we're close enough that we can bring talent in from New York or somewhere, and I know we want to maintain high standards, and so, we're not talking about lowering standards, but there've been too many examples of highly qualified teachers or administrators who buck up against a certification bureau that is, you know, the immovable object, and often relies on legislation or other departmental guidance to make that, and it's just a barrier to recruiting talent that I don't think other states have. Other states have realized that there is a shortage of qualified people in certain fields. So, I would just look at the certification arena as one of those talent barriers. Before we, I just want to make sure that if our students have a chance to make a comment, if you'd like to, this is your chance to influence the direction of the state education system for the next five years. No pressure.
No pressure.
You can pass if you want, but I didn't want you to not feel you had an opportunity. So, Stephanie or Sarah, would you like to say anything to the commissioner?
Um, no.
If I may?
I think we have to stop pretty soon.
Sure. I just want to wrap things up because I know Mr. Pryor's on a tight schedule.
I figured, actually, I would ask only one so that it would give people an opportunity. I just had several things. One, I would like to see healthy foods in schools. I think it has a direct impact on learning. I also have concerns about the burden of proof, and one of the reasons I do, not just the monetary piece, but I don't think that we have consistency throughout the state in terms of identifying the needs of students and also what we provide students. There's a tremendous amount of disparity, and I think that needs to be addressed before we can really iron out the burden of proof. And then, the last piece, I think, when we were talking about talent, is how we evaluate the end result. When we look at our students as they're leaving our district, are they well-prepared? Are they ready for any kind of job, or are they prepared for college? Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
I just wanted to look out to the audience. I know that we have First Selectman Tetra here, State Representative Brenda Kupchak, and Selectman Walsh is in the back of the room. I don't know if either, any of you have comments for the commissioner that you wanted to share this evening, but...
I guess not.
Nope. Okay. Brenda, sure, come to the mic.
I should mention that Representative Kupchak used to be a member of this board.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure to have you here, and I look forward to working with you. I sit on the Education Committee, and some of the things that you are going to be obviously working on is the ECS funding. It's a huge issue that has been taking forever to get unraveled and fixed.
Yes.
The Governor's Office actually asked members of the Education Committee to try to come up and meet with them in the next couple of weeks to talk over some of these things, because he wants us to be in education session, you know, to talk about different things.
Yes, that's for sure.
So, I just want to mention that. I mean, some of the things, obviously, I think you're aware of, is that we're going on 2,000 census data, and some of the towns had prison populations counted, university students counted in their population, so they're getting extra money based on numbers that are not accurate. So, that's, to me, a big thing. And I also think that there should be more skin in the game for some of the bigger cities that get mostly all of their education dollars from the state. I think there should be more skin in the game. You know, Fairfield ponies up a lot of our own money to pay for our school system, and we get very little. Obviously, you hear this from all the suburban districts. And I think that the bigger cities like Hartford and New Haven and Bridgeport need to put some more skin in the game and have a little more accountability. And I think that we learned a lot during this past session in the Education Committee regarding the arguments with unions and about teacher evaluations, and some, you know, one of the unions were open-minded about it, and the other union wasn't. I'm hoping we're going to come back and address and talk more about that this session. So, I think that's a big component. And again, thanks so much for being here.
Thank you. I very much look forward to working with you.
Would you like to wrap anything up? I would like to just say thank you for taking the time to be here and sitting here next to you, and I heard you speak at the Cabe Convention. I can see your enthusiasm for the job. So, congratulations and welcome, and we look forward to working with you. I think communication is key.
Yes.
So, we are very, very happy to have you here. Can I offer you any final words to wrap up?
I just want to express my gratitude for your warm welcome, and I truly look forward to working with you throughout my tenure. It's already been highly informative, so I'm very grateful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we're going to move to a meet and greet, so we're going to take a break for five minutes, and then we'll reconvene. Thank you.
Thank you. That's terrific. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody. We'd like to now convene to the organizational meeting of our board, and for this, we will move to the election of a temporary chairman slash secretary. May I have a motion? The recommended motion is that in accordance with the bylaws, Superintendent Dr. David Tidal will serve as temporary chairman secretary during the election of board officers. Moved by Mr. Carey, seconded by Mr. Dwyer. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Dr. Tidal?
Okay, the pressure's on. All right, so the first position is the position of Board of Education Chairman. I'll open the floor for nominations for Chair. Mr. Fattabean.
While we're certainly a new board with four new members, one of the concerns in having a chair, I believe, are the importance of having someone that has past board experience as well as some leadership experience. And I believe that Pam Iaccona meets these qualifications since she has served on the board for several years, is the most immediate current past Vice Chair, and she has demonstrated organizational skills, knowledge, and the capability to serve. So, with that, I would nominate Pam Iaccona for the position of Chair.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Mrs. Cannelly?
At this time, I'd like to nominate Phil Dwyer for the position of Chair in speaking to those same qualities, as a gentleman with experience in leadership position with boards, as a person with experience in education, serving on boards, and as someone who, in the current election, was someone who spoke consistently about an ability to pull all sides together in fairness, with a voice, allowing a voice to all, pulling those voices together. I'd like to nominate Phil Dwyer.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I will declare nominations are closed. Will now proceed to a vote. All those in favor of Mrs. Iaccona, please raise your hand. Five. All those in favor of Mr. Dwyer, please raise your hand. Four. Vote is five to four. Mrs. Iaccona, congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion that one of the issues that came up during the discussion on board leadership is the need that the board recognize that their working relationships need to change, that that was a consistent theme throughout the campaign. I would like to think that the first vote, or I'd say the second vote that we took, that while we may have had different viewpoints on who would best effect that change, that I think the board should then pass a motion that says that we elect Pam Iaccona Chair by unanimous vote. So, I'd like to put that motion forward.
Well, that's a good Robert's Rules question for me. I think we, according to the agenda, I believe we have to go to the next item on the agenda. However, I think that during the regular meeting, you can add an item to the agenda, and if it's added by two-thirds vote, a motion can be added to the regular agenda. So, I think there may be an opportunity to do that, but I think this might not be the place to do it. That would be my inexperienced take on it. So, let's proceed with the agenda as written. The floor is open for nominations for the position of Board of Education Vice Chairman. Mrs. Gerber?
Yes, I would like to nominate Philip Dwyer for all of the reasons that Mrs. Cannelly said in terms of his leadership and his abilities. I think he would be an excellent Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, I declare the nominations closed, so we can have a trial run. All in favor of Mr. Dwyer?
Good.
Unanimous. You voted for yourself. You're allowed to. Right. Unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Dwyer.
Can I comment? Just can I have a brief comment on that that I wanted to say before we took the vote that I think you had a chance to...
No, we're going to, let's move on.
How many times are you going to challenge David on Robert's Rules?
Right. Let's go to Secretary. Nominations for Secretary. Mr. Carey, you have a nomination.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mrs. Gerber for Secretary.
Mrs. Gerber's been nominated for Secretary. Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Mrs. Brandt?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Maxim Cannelly. I think in the spirit of what the composition of the board is, and also, I think what we've been hoping for was something sitting at the table that was going to move us forward and, you know, kind of calm the waters, and I actually think she'd be great, and so, I'd like to have her as our Secretary, please. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Seeing none, I'll declare the nominations are closed. We have two nominees, Mrs. Gerber and Mrs. Cannelly. All those in favor of Mrs. Gerber, please raise your hand. Five. All those in favor of Mrs. Cannelly. Four. Five to four. Mrs. Gerber, you're the Secretary. And that's the end of my time to run this meeting until a year from now. The officers, according to the bylaws, the newly-elected officers take office immediately upon election. The election has concluded, and so, traditionally, actually, the seats do change. So, I believe that the Vice Chair usually sits there, and the Secretary usually sits here. So, take your seats, and I will turn the meeting back over to our new Chair, Mrs. Iaccona.
Thank you, and I would just like to take a moment of personal privilege to say thank you for this honor, and I do really want this board to put its divisiveness aside and work together for the 10,000 students that we serve in cooperation with central administration and the other town bodies. And I hope that we will all work together and respect one another and move forward in a meaningful manner. I ask for your patience and look forward to working with everybody. And with that, thank you very much. We are on Item C, which is review of our bylaws. You all received a copy of our bylaws in your packet, and at this time, I will entertain any suggestions as to making changes to the bylaws. The idea I had for this evening was that we would sort of hear each other out on what we were looking for. Dr. Tidal would take some notes as to what the board wants to do, and then we could assemble those into some sort of motion and then vote them up or down. I was hoping to do this. We have a special meeting scheduled for December 1st, so I was hoping we could add this to the agenda for December 1st. That way, that would leave our December 13th meeting open for regular board business. That would give us an opportunity to go through this. You could get us any changes and recommendations, and then we could put that all together for the December 1st meeting. If anybody has any different thoughts on that, I'm open to hearing suggestions, but I thought that would kind of help us move along. That way, we could get right into board business on the 13th. So, with that, does anybody have any changes that they're recommending on the bylaws? Mr. Confortito?
Yes, Madam Chair. Section four committees, it's my intent on whatever meeting you set the agenda for, to move that Section A, two, Facilities, Information Technology, and Long-Range Planning Subcommittee, and Section three, the Finance and Budget Community Relations Committee, be stricken from the bylaws, and that we stand with one standing committee, the Curriculum Policy and Special Programs. My rationale for this is that I think those subcommittees have run their course, and that those issues have been issues that I think deserve open debate at this table, and I think they've caused some consternation in previous years, and I think if they're eliminated and they're brought directly to the table, that we can discuss them open and honestly, and I see no need. We have already a long-range plan in place. We have a facilities plan in place that's been worked on continuously for the last, at least, five years that I'm aware of, and I think those subcommittees can be done away with.
No, we're just going to collect stuff, and we'll...
Mrs. Brandt, I see her here.
Thank you. There were a couple of things. Actually, I had on my list as well to eliminate those two subcommittees, so I agree. The other thing is, in the last two years, we've had a Board of Finance liaison and also an FEA liaison, and in the interest of communications, I think it would be prudent to keep both. They have not been incorporated into our bylaws, but I think they should be. Also, if you look on under, it's basically page eight, if you want to count them, it's Section one, formulation of policies. B, it said, "In order to issue compliance with current legislation and regulations, the board shall contract with Cabe for a full review of all policies and administrative regulations at least once every five years." We do have an agreement with Cabe, but that's renewed annually.
Just interrupt you for one second. We're on Article four, Section one, letter B.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And my concern is that I don't want this body to be restricted in terms of, there are other places we can also have that service. So, I didn't know that board members wanted to commit themselves to only using Cabe.
Okay, so would your recommendation for a review be to...
Should just contract with a full review of all policies and to be determined.
So, take out the word "Cabe"?
Yes.
Anybody else? Mr. Dwyer?
On Article four, Section four, Board Evaluation, it's the next page after the one that we were just discussing. The Board Evaluation calls for it to be conducted in May, which is a slow time for us, given that we have only the budget to look at. And I'm wondering if the bylaws ought to be that prescriptive as to it's conducted in May, and then when we don't do it in May because of the pressure of time, that it either be more general or pick a month that is not as jam-packed.
Does it take out the wording? Is that what you're saying? Take out the wording that says that it's special meeting in May?
Correct. Or choose a different month that we know traditionally is, gives us a little bit more time to put into a Board Evaluation.
Do you have any thoughts on what month you would want that to be? Just to offer a little bit of history on that. We've found in the past that if we don't specify a month, it tends to get away from us and then never makes it onto it.
No, I think we should specify a month. I just think the months leading up to adoption of the budget will just naturally cause us to not put as much effort into it as we should.
All right. Do you want to think about what you would recommend as a recommended timeframe for that, and then we can incorporate that for the next meeting?
Sure. Why don't we, all of us, think about that?
Okay.
Pick a month that we think makes sense.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Mr. Confortito?
If I can just comment to Mr. Dwyer's recommendation, which I embrace, I think that evaluation has to be done in sufficient time before the superintendent's evaluation. It's my understanding that that's done sometime in June. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, it would leave us, and sometime, you know, contemporaneously with that period of time. So, I would think we would be looking sometime between January and May, and I'm not so sure that any of those months are better than others. But I would, you know, what if we said no later than May, and no sooner than, you know, January?
That might work as well. Okay?
Not with the bylaws, but because the bylaws... Not with the bylaws, but, because the bylaws require us to take minutes, but Robert's Rules generally recommend, or do recommend, that the minutes are not intended to capture every person's comment or conversation, but more to capture the actions that take place at a meeting. And so I would like the board to consider that when we vote on the bylaws in general, that we have some conversation as to not asking the staff to try and figure out which comments should be in, which comments shouldn't be in, and whether they've captured them correctly, and if we limit the minutes to capturing the final action, and that perhaps some expression as to what the viewpoints were that caused the vote to go the way it did in summary form, that that would be better form, according to Robert's Rules.
Mr. Fattabey?
Just my personal view and comment on that. I think while Robert's Rules has some preference with minutes in general, this is a public body. My preference would be to accurately reflect the minutes of all comments at the meeting because it's a public record, and it serves a purpose not just for us, but for the public at large. So I would, and fairly strong in my opinion, that it should be inaccurate, since it is a public record and accessible for future generations as well as the public, that it should accurately reflect, in essence, all comments, although it can do so briefly, but I believe it should accurately reflect the goings-on in the meeting in not just summary fashion.
Thank you. Mr. Lu?
Thank you. I would agree with Mr. Fattabey in that, not that the minutes have to be an exact verbiage, quotes of everything that was said, but that it fairly represents both sides that are presented in the issue. So at least, that's a starting place, and then if someone were to ask for something more, then that can be decided at a particular board meeting.
Unless someone wants to propose a bylaw on it, it won't be any difference.
Mrs. Brand?
Question regarding this, because it's, what we're talking about is the record of the meeting. How long are our tapes or video of the meetings, are they kept? And is the written form then ultimately the only record that then we have of the meeting?
That requires me to go to the records retention policy of the State Library of Connecticut, but my understanding is that any oral or video recording of the meetings need to be kept for an extended period of time. I do not know the exact language under the statute, but it's not like once you put them to paper, you can then obliterate them. It's a period of several years, my understanding, under the statute, but we can look up the records retention on that, and whatever it is, that's what we'll follow.
Does anybody else have anything? I just had one thing that I wanted to look into, and that's for the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, I don't know that CAE has liaisons per se anymore. I think maybe what we need is a liaison to the CAE Delegate Assembly, so the only change that I might possibly propose is a wording change to add Delegate Assembly, but that's a clerical thing that needs to be looked into, so I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Yes, Mrs. Brand?
We did it a while back, and it sort of fell out of favor, but given that we've had the Commissioner of Education, and that we're looking, you know, possibly at a lot of different changes at the state level, it isn't that someone necessarily has to actually attend, but I think it would be very helpful if we had someone reporting to the board on a regular basis what's going on in the legislature, and whether they're gonna see any votes from the State Board of Ed, Department of Ed, if, just to keep our finger on that, because it has a huge impact on us.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything else on the bylaws?
All right, so what we'll do is, between Bev and I, we've captured, there's maybe five distinct proposals. We'll put those up, and then at that meeting, we'll just take them one at a, I think what we did last time, we just took them one at a time, up or down, and that's it. Sound like a plan?
Excellent, thank you. Next, we have discussion of board assignments. You should have received again in your board packet, a list of Board of Education assignments. If everybody could start to think about those and get back to me with your preferences. Obviously, we'll be discussing again on December 1st what constitute assignments, whether or not we'll be having additional committees or not, so that's something to keep in the back of your mind as well. So if people could get back to me, why don't we say, after that December 1st meeting, which is what, a Thursday?
Yes.
We're having a special meeting.
On the contract.
It hasn't been noticed yet. Mr. Dwyer, yes?
The calendar has some meetings for the committees that we're talking about whether to continue with them, and they don't have their full complement. Are we assuming that those committee meetings that are scheduled on the year-long calendar will not be held, or?
Well, the, frankly, Facilities and Finance wouldn't meet in December, quite frankly, regardless. Policy has a meeting scheduled for the 7th, so if we make a decision on the 1st, and the chair appoints members, as long as she does it before the 7th, whoever's on Policy will hold that meeting. So it actually works out better if we take care of this at that special meeting for that very reason, that we wouldn't have to worry about, there's not, you know, it's not a full complement of people.
All right, so what...
It should work.
If everybody gets back to me, I'd say by December 2nd with what their interest is, then I can...
They can do it now.
Yeah, I mean, if you know, between now and December 2nd, if you could just send me what your preference is, and I'll do my best to see how we can accommodate people. Does that work for everyone?
Okay.
Okay. Wow. The next item on the agenda is the presentation of the music curriculum, grades K through Dr. Rosato, I assume you're taking care of this?
Thank you, and if I could ask the board members at this side of the table to move elsewhere, because we are going to have a PowerPoint presentation, and give us a minute to set that up?
Is it for you and the screen? So if they just started talking? See? Yep. We have got a question about what we're spouting about, we weren't sure what they were talking about.
We are very pleased, actually, to be bringing you the elementary school's music curriculum. This actually caps off a multi-year process. About four years ago, Donna Schmardel, our K through 12 music coordinator, brought forward the high school, high school music curriculum. Two years ago, brought the middle school curriculum, and this year is bringing the elementary curriculum, so that will bring K through 12 all in alignment and hopefully adopted by the Board of Education. Donna is herself an accomplished musician, she's also a teacher up at Ward High School, and she also, in her spare time, coordinates the entire music program, of which I know you are all well aware that it's an exemplary program. And this particular curriculum is very important because the foundation for that great program that we all benefit from takes place at the elementary schools. So I'm gonna turn it over to Donna. You should know that the work on this curriculum was developed by the teachers themselves in the schools, under Donna's leaderships. Donna?
Thank you. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to share with you the past couple of years of curriculum writing work. It's actually been revision work, and I know the board got packets on Friday that has the documents, and I just wanna walk you through briefly what's in that packet. So for those of you that do have the packet, on the left-hand side, the second page, you'll see members of our curriculum committee listed, and a number of them are here in the audience this evening, so I would like to recognize them and ask them to stand and thank them for all their hard work on this curriculum, and if I didn't see somebody walk in, please let me know. So from the General Music Curriculum Committee, Martha Alward is here, Dr. Martha Alward, Sharon, please stand, Sharon Cardillo, and Laura Hartshorn, who worked on the Elementary General Music Curriculum. From the Orchestra Curriculum Committee, we have Cindy Eckhart in the audience this evening, and Carrie Trombley. And then also, just in support of our curriculum, a couple other folks were able to come out this evening, and CJ Frawley is in the audience, CJ's one of our middle school choral teachers, and Linda Zwickler, who is an elementary band director, is also with us this evening. So I'd like to thank you all for all your hard work and for all your efforts in making this possible. And I missed Lisa Batke, I'm sorry, Lisa. Lisa Batke, too.
Yay, Lisa.
The, on the left-hand side, there's also in your packet our K-12 music sequence, which shows the list of courses that are offered kindergarten through high school, and you'll see a slide with that as well, once I get to the PowerPoint. On the right-hand side of your packet, you'll see the list of documents that are coming forward tonight, and then the documents themselves. So before I get into the PowerPoint presentation, I'd just like to take a brief moment and explain the process we went through to get where we are with this curriculum revision. Prior to the curriculum committees beginning their work, the elementary music staff was asked to review the current curriculum, which was approved by the Board of Education in 2000, and keep an eye, thank you, and keeping an eye to what they found over the years needs clarification, modification, or an overhaul. Those thoughts were then sent to me to bring to the revision teams for further review and discussion. After that, there was two years spent with concentrated effort on curriculum revision, which included professional development days, summer curriculum work, and release time. There were three distinct and separate curriculum committees at the elementary level, because we have three strands, the band strand, orchestra, and general music, which also encompasses chorus, and on each of those committees, there were two to three people, and I facilitated for each of those committees. Once the curriculum was revised, the documents were made available to the music staff for their review, and comments and suggestions were offered, and then some adjustments were made as a result of that, so everybody did have their hand in the process. Parent focus group met on October 26th. After reviewing the documents, they, their comments were that they found them to be well organized and easy to follow, and very thorough. The people on the curriculum, on the parent focus group have had throughout their lives some form of either experience in music, making music, or somehow participating through their children, so they felt pretty comfortable reading the document and offering feedback. There was discussion at the Board of Ed Subcommittee on November 2nd regarding the curriculum and the process that we took, the road we took to get here, and then back on November 15th, the presentation was given to our Curriculum Council of Administrators and Curriculum Leaders. Over the past few years, as Dr. Rosato has just said, we've written high school curriculum and revised middle school curriculum that was, the middle school curriculum was originally approved in 2002, the high school curriculum a few years ago was written brand-new, and all of that received Board approval. So in the curriculum that's coming forward this evening, much of what was adopted and approved back in 2000 remained, yeah, 2000 remained the same. It's standards-based, and general music, most of the content remained the same, the content topics and objectives continue through each grade, and skill level, skill development and knowledge base broadens and deepens with each grade level. Instrumental music follows the Fairfield skill levels, which were developed back in 2002. Changes to the new curriculum in general music, there were very few changes. The general music curriculum was made clearer by identifying specific strategies, such as Kerwin hand signs and Gordon counting methods. Some objectives were reworded using measurable verbs, such as demonstrate and identify, instead of words like experience and explore. Assessments continued to be refined. And the instrumental curricula were revised to be more comprehensive by better identifying objectives and developing focus questions, developing and implementing assessments, and including resources within the document itself. So that's the process that led us to where we are today, by bringing these documents forward. So now I'm gonna move to the PowerPoint presentation, which will just kind of walk you through and give you a sense of our overall curriculum, K-12. So do we wanna turn off the... Okay. Okay, yeah. Okay, this isn't working. All right. And... So you may recognize that music as the D S E D from Mozart's Requiem. It was used abundantly in the movie Amadeus, if you've seen that, it's a stapling choral literature. The question I have, though, is have you ever thought about what it takes to get to a point to play that type, to perform that type of literature? And of course, the answer is well-thought-out, well-planned, and very thorough music curriculum. This is the sequence of K-12 classes in the music strand. General music is offered in K through 5, and all students participate in general music. In middle school, which is still, music is required, students go from taking general music and opting to take band or orchestra. All students in elementary school sing in the chorus. They then narrow their focus a little bit, not a lot, a little bit, to a strand for performance or technology, and then in high school, when the music is elective, then you can see the sequence of classes that students can take, and many students take more than one. The elementary courses that are being brought forward this evening are the general music. The chorus is in parentheses, though, we view that and we work with that as a separate class. The curriculum itself is embedded in the K-5 curriculum, and we have our instrumental music, 4 and 5, and band in grade 5. In the K-5 music curriculum, the content topics remain the same for each grade. The objectives broaden each year as the students' knowledge deepens and their skill advances. The assessments used reflect the expanding expectations. It's through these content topics that the national standards are reached. Because we believe that kinesesia is critical in learning music, we've borrowed from the national dance standards to address the movement part of our curriculum. The next number of slides, you'll see the national standards, and in these, on the right-hand column, you'll see them in action, and we have our vocal standard. All students sing in every music class every day. When they come into general music, they sing, and this happens to be kindergarten. This is a 5th grade chorus rehearsal, as I've mentioned before, all students in 5th grade participate in chorus. They meet once a week for 45 minutes, this is in addition to their general music class, and they're learning ensemble skills in the choral class, as opposed to developing all, a lot of different skills that are going throughout the national standards. In instrumental music, all students play instruments in general music class. Instruments include orf instruments, as seen here, various small instruments, and recorder. In 3rd grade, students learn recorder. Recorders are played also through 4th and 5th grade. My sound isn't working, Jerry. Okay, let me go back, my sound wasn't working. Let's go back. There we go. All right, here we go. In this slide, you'll see students improvising to some choreography that some of their classmates had developed. And in this slide, from that improvisation, students then composed and were playing music that went with the choreography that was done according to a poem that was being read by their classmates. In this slide, you'll see the student over on the left, he's notating or beginning to notate the music that the kids just played on recorder. And in this class, this is the fifth grade, a fifth-grade chorus rehearsal, the students here just received a new piece in chorus. And with teacher direction, they're analyzing the music before they start to sing. Now, their analysis is grade-level appropriate, so they're looking for divided parts, they're looking for repeats, they're looking for when they come in, they're looking at the text, they're looking at things that are going to be recognizable at the fifth-grade level when it comes to analysis. For history and culture, this is a third-grade class that's preparing for a Veterans Day program. And here's another one. In this slide, what you can't see is, in the audience, there are about 30 veterans. Up on stage is the fifth-grade chorus. Seated on the floor is the entire school population, kindergarten through fourth grade. And over on the right, you'll see a slide, those are American troops in Afghanistan who are viewing the ceremony by Skype. And so they can hear and see the chorus singing, they can hear and see when the younger children stand up and perform patriotic pieces, they've made comments, it was this nice interaction. So a really, really nice way to celebrate and honor, through music, what we hold dear. And here we have the dance standard. Students in kindergarten begin to learn locomotor and non- locomotor movements while learning about beat and other elements of music, as well as developing their own creativity. And here, by third grade, you can see they're a little bit more organized. Even if you look at their feet, you can see they're kind of stepping, they're finding the beat on their own, they're able to keep track of the beat, unlike in kindergarten, where they're just starting to figure this out and starting to learn to move and explore what makes them part of a music-making process. In instrumental music, band and chorus, also, I mean, band and orchestra also access national standards through content topics. Similar to general music, orchestra content topics travel from fourth into fifth grade, and it's the skills that broaden and deepen, and the assessments reflect that as well. In all of our performing ensembles, band, orchestra, and chorus, we have skill levels, Fairfield skill levels, which start as soon as they begin performing in an ensemble, again, whether it's vocal or instrumental, and it progresses with them, or they progress through them, I should say, through high school, or for as long as they participate in the program. And we have six skill levels. This is an example of skill level one for orchestra, this is fourth-grade orchestra. This is just some of the objectives and some of the skills that students have to master to get from skill level one into skill level two, as they progress through our program into fifth grade, and then into middle school, and then high school. Small group lessons, instrumental music teachers meet with students in two different ways, small group lessons and ensemble rehearsal. Instrumental music, students receive homogeneous small group lessons. These lessons are the most critical part of the instrumental music curricula. It's a small group lesson, in the small group lesson that students learn the unique skills that need to be developed on each particular instrument. These skills learned, excuse me, these skills being learned and developed are both cognitive and physical, and specific method books are used district-wide for each strand. So the band strand has one set of method books, and the orchestra has a different set of method books. In the small group lessons, that's where the teacher is able to meet the individual needs, because the skill sets are so diverse from instrument to instrument. So this is where the teacher can really work with a student in a smaller setting to address their, whether, again, if it's a physical thing, hand placement, or a processing thing that they're working on and counting beats, this is where these things happen. The ensemble rehearsals, band and orchestra rehearse once a week before school. The ensemble rehearsals, when the students come together to work collaboratively on ensemble literature. This music is different from what's studied in the small group lesson. During ensemble rehearsals, students apply what they've learned in their small group lesson and work on developing ensemble skills needed to play in band or orchestra. Now, in this slide, you're going to hear students in fifth grade who have had their instruments for less than two months, and they're already trying to put those skills that they've learned in those individual, those small group lessons, and collaborate together to make an ensemble. There are a number of enrichment opportunities available to elementary students. These are just some of them listed here. This is a picture from the 2009 Town White Orchestra Festival. Seated in this slide, you wouldn't know it, but there are 225 fifth graders who performed This is from last year, this is a fifth-grade band night, and this is, it's not a formal concert, but it's when students come together from different elementary schools as their to-be middle school band the next year. So three to four elementary schools come together and do a demonstration for their parents, and the instructors talk to the parents and let them know, and give them examples, real-life examples of what it's like to start learning an instrument, and then to try to put all of it together. And it's quite an educational experience. This is the first annual String Spooktacular. It happened this year. The concert orchestra from Fairfield Ludlow High School performed seasonal concert on October 25th. All elementary students were invited to attend and encouraged to wear their Halloween costume if they like. The fifth-grade orchestra students that chose to came a little bit early and learned some techniques to make some kind of spooky sounds on their instruments. And what you can't see in this slide is, offstage to the right, there's another student who's reading a story, and the fifth-grade students, and you can see them intermingled with the high school students, the fifth graders are in costume, the high school kids are in their formal concert attire. As the story was being read, at cued moments, the fifth graders joined with the ninth and 10th graders and played these sound effects and these spooky sounds. So they got a chance to play with high school kids as just fifth graders. The next set of slides, you're going to see some kindergarten students singing, you're going to hear fifth-grade students, middle school students, and high school students. And the intent of these four slides is to give you an example of the progression, what we start with in kindergarten and where we go. And this, we're just focusing on vocal development for time's sake, but you're going to get The music that you heard at the beginning was also the combined high school choirs. The first, second slide that you heard was the same group of singers, and that was a different excerpt from the same piece. On the very first slide of this presentation, it read "Music Education Leading to a Lifetime of Success in the 21st Century." These skills have been identified as 21st century skills. As you watch the next segment, consider how many of these skills are being developed in every music class and in every rehearsal. That's it?
See, part of the presentation was a game of musical chairs.
Does anybody have any questions or comments on the music curriculum? Mrs. Brand.
When we had Mr. Pryor here earlier, he was talking about encouraging our talent. I think this is by far one of our most outstanding programs, and I think it is certainly something to be proud of. All my children have benefited from it. We had one that couldn't particularly carry a tune. By the time that we were done, you guys had her there. But there actually is a teacher here, Mrs. Kuruglian, that I remember well, that my children remember well, that made sure that music is a part of their life. Whether they play an instrument or not, it's still very much a part of their life. So you do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lou.
Yes, I'd just like to second what Mrs. Brand said. My kids love your program. I love your program. You know, you're trying to find things to make your kids do things on their own, like study and their homework. And my son was part of that Veterans Day celebration where he got to speak a little bit, and he gave up television to write it down on the cue cards, and he was very proud of the entire thing. I think it was a great thing that the school put on, and I think you run a really great program. Thank you.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well. Hi. I've had at least one of my children in elementary school since 2003, and the experience they've gotten through your music program has just been invaluable. So thank you, it's wonderful.
Thanks. Anyone else? Mr. Convertito?
Are we just doing accolades now, or are we doing questions as well?
Questions are fine. And encourage.
I think the music program was great, and actually, at the Cabe Convention, the high school a cappella group sang, and was wonderful to hear them, and again, last night, to see the other high school programs. I have a couple of questions. Early on in your presentation, you said you had identified areas that needed revision. I wonder if you could explain what those were, how this new curriculum rectifies them, and how they're being addressed in the new curriculum.
Some of the things, and as I had mentioned, the changes that we have, some of the things, one of the things that we needed to do was clarify a few things. One of these, I discovered when I was working with a long-term substitute teacher who was looking at our curriculum and asked, "Do we do the Kerwin hand signs?" And I know we do, and his question to me was, "When do we start that?" And I looked through the curriculum, and it wasn't there. So it was things like that, things that are just kind of like putting the final touches on it, identifying specific strategies and when we want to introduce those. So we did that in the general music. We've also, as I said, we reworded some of the objectives to make them more measurable. So instead of exploring and experiencing, we're demonstrating and identifying. And there weren't a lot of those. Most of them already did demonstrate, identify, perform. But the few that still were a little bit unmeasurable, we clarified those and corrected those. We're continuing to work on assessments, and that is one of our challenges, because we only see in general music, we see the kids twice a week for half an hour. So trying to balance that ever-important assessment piece with keeping the classes hands-on, active, moving, and experiencing the music, so that's one of the things that we'll always be working on, is refining those assessments. And then in the instrumental program, we had objectives written, but they were somewhat open-ended, for lack of a better word. So we clarified those and gave specific examples of skills we want the students to have, and kind of really tied them more with our skill levels that we already have had in place for a number of years now.
Can I follow up?
Yes.
You have to, excuse me for going back and forth here, I had lost my cellphone, so I couldn't transpose my notes before I got here. You mentioned, I mean, faculty helped with developing it, this has been rolled out to them, they're all on board with it, is my assumption. Is there any new additional costs associated with the revisions in the curriculum moving forward?
Not really new costs, but more like upgrades. We haven't had, we haven't added any technology at the elementary level, certainly since I've been here, and I've been here 10 years. So we have students who, classrooms where the teachers need to play examples of music, and we don't necessarily have the right equipment to play it, or play it with easy access. A number of teachers often will use YouTube videos to show a major symphony performing a work, but we don't have external speakers on the computer, so you can't really, things like that, things bringing us forward from the days of CDs to iPods. So we have some technology needs that we definitely need to look at. We also have some aging instruments, like classroom pianos, that in an elementary school can take quite a beating, that need replacing. So whether it's a piano or moving to a digital piano, we're looking at that, and those, I'm still gathering information on each, from each school, as to where we are and what we need, and do we need everything all at once? I'm in the process of that.
Okay. Just one follow-up question, and you alluded to it a couple of minutes ago. In the elementary school, this is, you know, what I call an overlay curriculum, in which we, as well as it is in... we, as well as it is in, in the middle schools, in which we pull children out of class to teach. This curriculum, an elementary school, 30 minutes, twice a week, is, has there been any thought on how to change that delivery system or better it? Or are you satisfied with the way it is now?
Well, the general music isn't the first thing. It's, it's 30 minutes twice a week and then the fifth grade has an additional 45-minute choral rehearsal on, on top of that. That is close to recommendations by the state. We would love to have more time, but I don't know how that would happen. Connecticut recommends a 60 to 90 minutes per week and we have 60, so we're there, but not at the high end. So, you know, we're, the national recommendation is, is 90 minutes per week. So, we're a little bit short of that. But for the state of Connecticut, we're there. Would we like to, to have more? Of course. Then there's cost, more cost associated with that. So, I haven't thought of another way to deliver it yet.
Thank you.
Mrs. Canaly?
Beginning with a few comments from Pryor in the evening. We had our state commissioner make reference, my comment is regarding the content of general music, that our state commissioner made reference to the idea of acknowledging or nurturing the understanding that all the pieces of our education are supposed to fit together. Dr. Title made reference to the idea that we don't want to lose the high level of instruction that we have and, you know, to recognize our very gifted students at the high school level. That said, there's no question that a lot of the students in elementary school won't be continuing with intensive music, either for lack of ability or lack of interest, what have you. And the elementary school education, general music course especially, has the one advantage over anything from middle school and the one difference from high school is that they're all taking it. It's known they're all taking it and that's a situation that to me seems almost underutilized. And by that, I would be curious about that. There, there's nothing, there's only a few mentions of history and culture. I'm looking at the, the third grade mentioning of, students will understand music in relation to history and culture. And it would seem like it's an ideal opportunity to be even more specific about exactly what aspects. I know case in, one example where I know it does take place. I know at my children's school, and I'm sure it's true of all of them, that when they do their unit on Japan, I know my children have worked with Dr. Alward at a, for a whole presentation with that, which is incorporating what they're studying in social studies in music. And so, I guess I'm not clear on why there can't be more specific, explicit connections made on that history and culture component. I'll let you start with that and then I'll hit you with the next one.
Well, and again, part of it is that we have 30 minutes twice a week and we have nine standards for just music, national standards of music, and then we have our 10th standard, which is our movement standard. So, trying to address all of them now, to say what's only identified in the curriculum, again, that is what everybody must, will and does. Not to say that it's not supplemented continually with units on Japan, units on other things that are going on in the classrooms. As a classroom teacher says, "Oh, you know, we're working on this right now. Is there a song? Can we do something with it?" That happens all the time, but it varies from school to school. So, it's not specifically identified here.
Even though the, for example, the social studies curriculum, that is set from school to school in terms of, you know, they will hit their Japan unit, they will hit their Civil War unit, they will hit their colonial era unit. So, that can't be worked in, and again, this is my ignorance of, of the music curriculum, but is there a reason that that can't be further specified?
Further specified?
I mean, that that music would be a conduit through doing those, you know, that tremendous list of skills, again, as you point out, in only 60 minutes. But that it can't be done through the lens of what we know they're also covering in their social, in the social studies curriculum. I'm curious why that couldn't be a more explicit part of the curriculum.
I think it's important, it's important to know that it, it is there in some areas. However, the music curriculum supports almost all of the academic areas at the elementary school in different ways. Mathematics, language, social skills, those, those sort of skills that we're looking for the elementary schools to, students to master. So, you know, we are working with a set of standards that come down to us from the state that we are certainly looking to make sure that the students master. And I think the end result, you know, shows that they are doing that. But through that and indirectly, they are touching upon those other academic skills that we want the kids, mathematics is, is a good one. So, it does support the, the academic program in a major way.
I guess, and I fully acknowledge that because I'm, I'm sure it is happening. I guess I just come back to the idea of, in, in education of that they are, I wrote down, you know, the expli, that the students would have the explicit awareness that they're pursuing those standards and that they would understand that they're, you know, I'm looking at, you know, even at some of the common core standards of recounting stories, describing characters, describing the overall structure of a story. Those are part of the English Language Arts curriculum and yet that could be so easily, you know, additionally supported through the music program and just how it enriches their education when they're seeing the connections.
And it is, but maybe not in, in the way that's really obvious. Well, yeah. I have something here and I, let's see if I can find it. So, yeah, because, because we have, we support the, the general education curriculum. So, like there, if we look at reading concepts versus music concepts, letter recognition connects very closely with note recognition, sound and symbol association, sound and symbol association, vocabulary, parts of speech, elements of music. So, we connect, but not in this, using the same words, but we do make those connections and embed that in what we do and it's happening all the time. But it just might not be quite as obvious when you're looking at it, not looking at it through a music lens.
Anybody else? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next item is approval of minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 11th, 2011. Moved by Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Brand. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Yeah. Okay. So, we have, I'm sorry, four, five in favor.
Oh, approval of the minutes? I'm sorry.
Yes.
No, I was saying, oh, no, wait a minute. It's the first set. I'm, I'm there now.
Okay. All right. So, all, Mr. Lou, myself, Mr. Fattabey, Mr. Carey, Mrs. Brand, opposed. Abstentions. Mr. Convertito, Mrs. Canaly, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer. Item passes. Approval of the minutes for the special meeting in November 4th, 2011. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of November 4th, 2011. Moved by? Anyone? Mr. Carey? Seconded by? Mrs. Canaly? All in favor? Aye. Two, three. Yeah. Opposed. Abstentions. Mr. Convertito, Mr. Lou, Mrs. Canaly, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Brand. And I believe in accordance with Robert rules.
It passes.
Yes, exactly. It passes.
306.
Yes.
It works.
Onto committee reports. Our student liaisons. Ludlow High School.
Hi. This has been a pretty busy time of year for Ludlow right now. Obviously, this was just the end of the first marking period, so we just got our report cards. We are looking forward to a pep rally in December this year. Seniors are excited for Spirit Week, which is coming up. Halloween was very fun too, on the spirit end of things going on. As well as homecoming, our homecoming football game and our homecoming dance were both huge successes. We recently had a cyberbullying and internet safety program, so that was actually very interesting for all of our grade levels who got to see that. We also had a freshman forum, which was very successful, which was sort of a getting to know each other and getting to know Ludlow type of event. We're looking forward to, we have World AIDS Day coming up the week after Thanksgiving, which is always a huge event for Ludlow. We learn about AIDS in all of our classes, we do special programs, so that will be exciting. I'm, I'm also a member of the a cappella group, so we sang at the Cabe Conference, or at the convention, as Mr. Convertito said before, and that was a huge honor and that was very exciting. For winter sports, we're getting ready. Tryouts are this week and next week, so we're getting ready to start off those new seasons. Our fall play is, It's a Wonderful Life and that will be on December 2nd, I believe. And we're also getting ready for candlelight and our winter concerts, so those rehearsals are happening. And alumni coming tomorrow are visiting and that's also exciting for many of the seniors who are friends with them and we, there's a special presentation, I believe, period seven, in which they're going to talk to all of the senior class.
Thank you. So, for academics, the first quarter report cards were distributed to students on Friday. For athletics, the Ludlow versus Ward football game will be at Ludlow on Thanksgiving at 10:00 a.m., so be there. The winter sports team season begins on December 7th and tryouts start next week. For extracurricular, Flowers for Allegra, the Fall Theater Production was a huge success this weekend. The Music Department is preparing for the Carolan on December 15th. And former Ward students are also returning to Ward tomorrow to talk about like their college experiences to the juniors and seniors. Homecoming was a great success and everyone had fun. We had two Navy SEALs speak to like history classes about their experiences for Veterans Day. And Student Forum went on a field trip to a leadership conference at Beaufort High School, which was a really good experience. And also, Trent's, the boutique ran by the fashion merchandising class, will be opening up on the 8th of December, so come stop by and buy stuff.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand.
Relative for SES, I'll just give a brief review because we do have new members at the table. SES covers all of Fairfield County. It stands for Cooperative Educational Services. And among those services, they provide special ed programs for birth to three, to 21-years, addressing autism spectrum disorder and other developmental disabilities in elementary, middle and high school. They also have a beginnings program for birth to three, which is an early intervention plan. There's also school readiness. They have a full day, 50 weeks per year developmentally appropriate preschool, which serves currently 54 students. In addition, there's the 6-6 Magnet School, as well as Thurgood Marshall Middle School. And they also are in charge of RCA, which is our Regional Center for the Arts. It's interdistic, part-time magnet school with high school, dance, music, theater, film. They cover a lot. They also, as we were talking earlier, do superintendent searches and review policies as well. In addition to that, it has afforded sometimes an opportunity and one of the things that came up in a meeting not that long ago was options or interests of particular boards because we have various towns representing. It's a perfect opportunity. And I asked if board members would be agreeable to mailing in or sending in what kinds of things our districts have done to have cost savings. So, I have that and I will be sending it out to this board so that, you know, we're coming up in the budget season. In addition, let's see, we also had a calendar approval, which you'll see because we have it on our agenda and generally they mirror one another. We also reviewed the bullying policy. They actually adopted the changes, which included the sexual harassment and they did change the language from "put down" to a disparaging language as well. There was also a presentation of the audit, which has to be presented to the board by law. It was actually very thorough and very well done and there were no recommendations except. There is a concern with the economy, that relative funds and where they are kept and whether we are insured and protected. If, for instance, you don't have it diversified or spread out, you've got to be sure that you have, if you have, say, 20 million someplace and it's not insured and you're not covered, there is a potential of creditors come that you could actually lose those funds. SES is also hosting a legislative breakfast for all superintendent board chairs and it is December 15th. The burden of proof was postponed by the State Board of Ed, requiring a study that is currently underway and to be completed in 2012 February. And then they will review it again and consider it and put it back on their agenda in March. Part of it was the questions about SRBI, or Scientific Research-Based Intervention, and this again has impact with us. And, let's see, one more, a few more things. One of the things that came up with professional development was also some of the upcoming changes with the core curriculum standards that we've missed, mentioned before. The 6-6 gave a presentation to the board and actually it was, it was really interesting. They've developed, and came up in subcommittee in policy. It's, the program is SWISS. You have to actually meet, it's called school-wide information systems. But they look at disciplinary reporting and what they did is they looked at what the issues were, the disciplinary issues, the trends, and then they compared that to their test scores to see if there was any kind of correlation. And there was. And the correlation was that students actually who were performing very well on their test scores were actually the ones that they were seeing more of incidents with. So, then what they did is modify what they did in their school day with their schedule and decrease the number of transition times because transition times were problematic. So, they ended up having a net result where they increased instruction time by reworking it and also had less disciplinary problems and hopefully will also have more learning opportunities. The other thing that they did, which was, I, I thought very helpful to me as a board member, when we have our CMT scores reported, we pretty much look at them as a moment of time. We look at a site with a third grade class and a fifth grade class. What they changed here, upon again, a board member's request, was a vertical representation. And in doing so, you started to get a better sense, not what was going on at a site at a year, but more the progress that the students were having over time, which I think was actually more helpful to board members in appreciating what kinds of things were happening and if children were in fact learning. It showed one thing in particular, that math-science actually needed to be addressed and it helped, you know, make that very clear. It certainly is something that I would like to see here. I think it would be very helpful for board members. But they were then able to translate that into an action with their school improvement plan and address the, the various behavioral issues. They know that they need to review and have more professional development for math and science. And again, that was extremely helpful as well. And in terms of the, there was a budget report and a facility update, which we're now doing as well. And they actually changed their format a little bit. And if you like, I will share that actually with Central Office, again, because of board members' requests, folks that have a lot more financial, certainly than I, but they actually are, do work in finance and they had a very good result and very positive comments related to that. And in terms of the Board of Health, they're just working on the amusations and how they're going to coordinate with that within the school district. And the last thing I think I had was our policy meeting, which quite frankly, it's already on our agenda and you're following it anyway. So, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Fattabey?
Yes, the Transportation Safety Advisory Committee convened and we did have one referral. And what's of note to the board, I believe, would be that that referral related to relocation of a bus stop. And in this particular situation involved a parent who had two students that were tending two different middle schools because of the recent redistricting and grandfathering and therefore was located at two different locations, each bus stop. So, there was a, a, difficult for the parent to accommodate that and therefore request to change one location. But that was, I believe, I've written my opinion or decision and believe that was disposed of.
Thank you. I have nothing to report at this time. None of my committees have met. Mr. Carey? I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Just a question for Mr. Fattabey. What, what is the policy on that with, with regard to that? How is that request handled or that referral handled?
The request- The request was, uh...
For a change of bus stop? So was it...
Well, firstly, it goes through the superintendent, uh, the transportation supervisor. He renders a decision initially, complying with board policy. Um, if the parent is still dissatisfied with that decision, it then is, uh, appealed to refer to the Transportation Safety Advisors, which compare, is comprised of, uh, I think, a, a police department representative, Board of Ed representative, which is myself, a, I think, a, a, another individual, which is, I think, from the administration...
Central Office.
Uh, Central Office. And each of those parties, um, will make a decision based on a packet provided with basic facts and information. And in this case, what I always do is I actually go to the site, and I can only vouch for myself on how I make a decision. But what I do is I go to the site, I take a look at where the location is, what the neighborhood's like, what some of the situations are, and then I review the decision made by the, um, Transportation Supervisor, uh, together with some of the facts he provides as to locations and distances and numbers, and then I review board policy, and I determine whether or not, um, the assigned bus stop is a violation of board policy, in which case I would render a decision that you have to do something. If it complies with board policy and seems to be reasoned, uh, reasons why that bus stop is at that location and does comply with board policy, I would then generally support the, the, um, decision of the Transportation Supervisor.
So in, in, through the chair, Mr. Fattabim, through, in that specific situation of the middle school, two different bus stops, I was wondering what the outcome of that was?
My opinion was that the, that the location of those bus stops, uh, did comply with board policy. There was no safety hazard or hazard situation that was determined at those locations, and that they did comply with board policy. And since the rationale for maintaining those bus stops was that, um, to have two elementary schoo-, two middle school bus stops at one location at the same time may be confusing for other students that are going to that bus stop, or you might have confusion as one student getting on the bus that he shouldn't because of their same location. There was reasonable rationale to have two separate locations for those two different elementary school bus stops, uh, because there are other, other students at that bus stop as well that were assigned. So, and the bus stops in this instance were relatively well within the guidelines of the board policy of loca-, of distance to the, to the residents. Uh, so they, they were relative, very close together, the two bus stops in general. So my decision was because it was in compliance with board policy, and there was a reasoned rationale as to why there would be two different bus stops at that location, to maintain the two different bus stops and not move a bus stop to, uh, to prevent the confusion of having a, two different elementary school, two, two different middle school buses stopping at the same bus stop at the same, approximately the same time, and cause potential confusion among the other students. Uh, so I thought that was the best resolution, um, in this situation. That was my opinion and, and decision. I have not heard back what the other members of that committee have decided and what their rationale was.
I just want to add, there's also a member for first students on that committee, right? Yeah. Mr. Liu?
No report.
Okay, great. Superintendent's report.
I'll be brief. It's nine, 10. I want to point out, because this hasn't, this happened actually right after the last, um, board meeting, um, as some of you know, one of the activities we're beginning to engage in is to have teachers and administrators join together and visit classrooms across the district. Um, for the new board members, I'll make sure I send you out some literature about it. It's called instructional rounds. You may have heard of it, may be the word. We did a massive, um, sort of guided practice training session on that, and I want to point out that Ward High School and its teachers were incredibly generous. They opened basically the entire school to the entire administrative cadre of the school system, plus some teachers from Ward, and so 48 visitors descended upon Ward, spread out to 32 different classrooms, took data, came together, debriefed it, um, and it was a, a great first step in what we hope to be, um, a practice in the district of classrooms being opened between the professionals and being able to discuss what they see and what evidence looks like in their effective practice, and being able to share what's happening in the private setting of the classrooms with the whole, uh, district. So it was quite the event. Also happened, I wish Stephanie were here, it was during Spirit Month, which at Ward every Friday, the seniors are allowed to dress up in, um, spirit-like costumes. Looking at some of the Ward staff out there. So, uh, know, knowing that, Mr. Coyne still agreed to allow us into the building. So there were some interesting characters in the building, not just the other administrators, but the students. But it was great. We saw a lot of outstanding instruction, a lot of good dialogue, and again, it wasn't just administrator dialogue to administrators, this is teachers and administrators talking together about what they saw in classrooms in a non-judgmental, uh, way. So I just want to say we've kicked that off, and every school is going to participate in at least one of these, not with the whole administrative team, but with, um, some outside folks from within the district and teachers from within the building, um, between now and, um, the end of the school year. So we're hoping to establish the practice, and, um, I'll send some, a couple of brief articles about it out there. So it's kind of exciting. And then the Cabe Conference, um, we got an opportunity to share some of our experiences with the rest of the state about the operational audit. So, not sure I really wanted to relive that on a Saturday morning, but, uh, I did. Mr. Dwyer braved to come to it as well. But one of the good things about the Cabe Conference is, you know, we have things to offer other boards who might be thinking about certain things, and so we're able to share our experiences, um, with other boards. So as a result of that, you know, board members might get calls from other districts who are thinking about the operational audit, because now we're, we're like the people to go to about an operational audit, so.
Lucky us.
Lucky us, right. We're not the only ones to have done it, but, um, anyway, it was well, for Saturday morning, there were a lot of people there, so obviously it's a hot topic around the state. Other districts are looking at it, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
For me, that's brief.
All right.
For the new board members, that's brief.
Old business. Approval of policy, recommended motion that the Board of Education...
This is Ikonah?
I'm sorry.
I apologize. I just had one question for, um...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Dr. Title, uh, and I apologize, I also don't remember if it was Stephanie or Sarah who pointed this out, but, uh, with the alumni coming in, is there, for that day of visiting, is there anything in place for asking them? I mean, obviously, they're in a forum probably just informally for the high school students to speak with them, but is there anything remotely set up for our staff to talk with them about how they're feeling in terms of their preparation for college? I mean, that's a source, it's, we're obviously in, in no position to do something formal since it's tomorrow, but has that been raised as, as a topic?
Um, I don't know, but let me check with the high school headmasters, and we'll get back to you.
Excuse me, Mrs. Brand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Dr. Title, are we going to have an opportunity where we'll go through, because I, I, I spoke to it, what happened at SES, um, the CMT results in our district, and what the district or, say, um, school improvement plans will be to, um, um, address them?
Well, you know, the, um, school improvement planning process is also another major initiative in the school district this year. We're completely revamping how that's done from K to 12, and so, and part of the school improvement planning process is for each school to analyze its own data and to look at what we call celebrations, and also what we call challenges, and what their game plan is for the next 18 months to address those. So when we get those finalized, we'll be sharing those with you, and you'll be able to see it in the school improvement plans of the district. Um, it's going to be midwinter sometime, I think by January. Because it's the first time through, really taking it, and one would involve as many faculty as possible in this, um, and it's new work, and it's very challenging work on a lot of levels, uh, we're giving people a lot longer period of time than you normally would to develop a school improvement plan. So I would guess that we'd have those available probably in the January, February timeframe.
Anybody else before I move on? Okay, um, old business, approval of policy. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve policy number 4220, smoking by school employees. Moved by? Mrs. Brand. Seconded by? Mr. Liu. Any discussion? Public comment? Seeing none, all in favor? It's unanimous. Next item, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy number 5314, smoking for students. May I have a motion? I, I'm sorry. I know. Mr. Dwyer? Seconded by? Mrs. Gerber? Any discussion? Mrs. Cannelli?
Just one quick question. Um, what level is, is, how is this communicated to the students that this is a change?
Uh, once the board approves it, we'll, um, issue something to all the students. Um, to, obviously, we'll go into the handbooks for next year, but it goes into effect immediately, so we'll leave that up to the principals to make sure that all the families and the, um, and the kids know about it.
Anybody? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, passes unanimously. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy number 5330, bullying. And I just want to note, um, that there wasn't a revised copy put at your desk. May I have a motion? Mrs. Brand? Seconded by? Mr. Dwyer? Any discussion? Mrs. Brand?
Um, there was another board member that actually was looking for perhaps more than just this, and, and I know Mr. Dwyer mentioned that earlier. I would still suggest that we, we move this forward and approve it. Um, it's, it's something that we have to do. We, we have a timeline that we have to follow. It's also, I think, it doesn't mean that we're limited to this. It means that as time goes on, if we see that we want to make improvements on, we are certainly able to do so, but I would encourage, um, um, board members to support this.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer?
I, uh, agree. We ought to pass this. When I was at the Cabe Conference, they made reference to the policy that would be followed by a plan.
Correct.
And where are we in that process? And to me, more importantly, is what's the evaluation mechanism to whether we move the needle or not? And the, uh, state suggests that there should be some assessment...
Yes.
...to be developed at a later point, uh, but what assessment will we be making ourselves to see if it's impacted the climate?
Uh, to your first point, um, after we have a policy in place, uh, the board is required to approve a, um, plan. And that is being worked on right now by Ms. Leonardi and a, a large group of folks. And that's in development, and we expect to have that before you for the December 13th meeting. So that's where that stands. We're, we're working on that, and that's part of the, of the legislation. Part of the, um, plan includes an assessment component. The state has a minimum standard of an assessment of every other year. State will develop a, an instrument to measure school climate that will include, um, surveys of parents and teachers and students. We have not seen that instrument. Uh, we may choose, once we see the instrument, um, within our budgetary appropriations, decide we want to use a different instrument, that we may want to use an instrument every year, not every other year, until we see what the state comes up with, because the state has to do this on a shoestring, and they can't charge us for this assessment, because it's supposed to have no costs. So once we know what the state assessment will be, um, we'll look at some other ones that are out there that would meet the requirement, and we might recommend through the budget process that we assess more frequently or using a different instrument than what is legally required. We probably will want, we probably will want to go beyond the legal requirement in this arena.
Mr. Carey?
So, a couple of questions and a comment, I guess. As I understand from our, our draft reading last time, that most of this is still the state boilerplate. And I don't even answer to this right now, Dr. Title, um, but by budget time, I would be curious to know that if any of these additional, um, resources that were, or time away from existing resources that are being utilized to, to meet these standards are going to cost us more FTEs, part FTEs, i- if we can tie a cost, cost to this. Uh, this is obviously an important first step for a very serious issue. But my comment is, is that the beginning boilerplate is all about what the administration and teachers have to do. And what I certainly hope to see as part of the AR on this, the, the administrative regulations, is, uh, uh, also what each individual responsibility is, including our students. And I'd like to see, uh, you know, personal responsibility be part of, of our overall theme. To that end, we had a, I had an opportunity last year to go to an event that was sponsored by SEPTA, which was fascinating, and some of our administrators were there, um, very educational. A gentleman came, and he speaks all the time to middle schoolers and their parents. Has a slightly different presentation for the parents than the middle schoolers. A tragic story, his son, uh, killed himself as a result of bullying, and, um, it was very, very educational, and it's something that I'd like to encourage our administration, at least as one board member here, to get in front of every one of our middle schoolers as soon as possible, and encourage us to also have a similar presentation for the parents to see. Understanding the consequences of this behavior, I, I think, is the, the fastest way to changing it. And this is, I think, one good way to kind of throw some cold water on some of the things that go on. The other thing that I, I thought was fascinating about this, and I know Mrs. Leonardi has got an advanced degree in this, and I'm, uh, I'm, I'm a newbie, but the research-based program, AWAIS, uh, which I believe comes out of Clemson, if I'm incorrect, um, and focuses efforts on not conflict resolution, but actually the entire environment, and not just the bully and the target of the bullying, but the audience the bully's performing for. I know it's a big piece to chew off, and Mrs. Leonardi's mentioned that might not be something that we do in the first pass, but I think that we should look at something like that, because when we're talking about creating an environment in our schools, um, part of it has to be working with that audience and the supporters and different roles they play. So I would encourage our team to seriously consider that research-based program, because I think it's an excellent one from what I've seen of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment on this item? Yes?
[inaudible] Bullying. Nations bully one another. Have been since time immemorial. A question for all of you, perhaps when you're shaming or holding or hearing, you ask yourself the President of the Constitution, why not? When a child is accused of bullying, and the proof is not in the bullying, it's in the facts. What happens if the parents are diseased by two diseases? One, complacent arrogance, and the other, too much money? And they decide that their child came here courtesy immaculate conception? What is the board going to do then? And, does the board have enough capital to confront the guilty parties, urgent and parents? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Back to the board. Anything further here? All in favor? Aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is approval of the educational specifications for Riverfield Elementary School expansion and alterations. Uh, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the educational specifications for Riverfield Elementary School extensions and alterations. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Mr. Carey, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. I believe we have a presentation, Dr. Title.
We have a brief presentation.
A brief presentation.
Right. Um, we took a little different tact on this, uh, project. Now, this project, as we know, is the number one project in the board's facilities plan coming up, and the board requested to the first selectman that we, that he, uh, formed a building committee. And... And when we went to the selectmen's meeting, there were a number of requests made of the administration with respect to this project, one of which was to bring back to the selectman the educational specifications for the project. So, we're moving this along maybe a little faster than in past times. The other thing that we did in an effort to have a better handle on what the project might look like and what the range of cost for the project might look like, without getting into a whole lot of detail, is we proactively engaged the services of an architect to do some very beginning conceptual design work, to see what might be possible, and to give the public and the Riverfield community a sense of what might, we might be talking about here, rather than simply a list of items, which is typically what you, what you have. And so, I'd like to have Mr. Collin introduce our architect, who's been working with us on this end of the project, to give you an overview, and then we'd be happy to take questions about the ed specs as well. I know this is a little bit different, but we wanted to be out a little more specific on this project for the town bodies as well as for the board.
Thank you very much, Dr. Title. Well, as you can imagine, the ed specs are the start of a project. It's the information we use that drives the project, explains the curriculum and the program. It also is the most important piece we need to send up to the State Department of Education, Bureau of School Facilities, to start the reimbursement process. The ed specs need to be approved by the Board of Ed. They actually look for those meeting minutes when we file the first form, which is an EDO 49. So, here tonight is Sal Morbido from my office. He's the manager of construction, security, and safety. He worked diligently on the ed specs and gathered all the people together so we could write those many drafts. And here tonight is Phil Saron. He's a local Fairfield resident, well-known in the town with a lot of the projects done at the schools. He originally, very familiar with the elementary schools and all the schools. He originally did a lot of facility studies back around 2000, when we had 61 portable classrooms in the district. So, I'd like to introduce him. He has some boards, and I have some handouts that'll help you with the two schemes we came up with, and we met with the principal on.
Good evening. My name's Phil Saron. My office is, I live in Fairfield, and my office is in Fairfield. And as Tom said, I've done a lot of work on the schools over the last 20 years, and we've done some work at Riverfield, so I'm pretty familiar with the facility. When Tom called me and asked me to take a look at the facility and to take a look at what some of the deficiencies were in the facility, currently, this capacity of the school's about 399 students, has five portable classrooms on the outside. And one of our objectives is to see what we could do to get rid of the portable classrooms, incorporate those into permanent classroom space, and improve the core facilities. The kitchen in the school is undersized, there's only one serving line, so that would be on our first point of our checklist. The second thing is the multipurpose room, which doubles as the cafeteria, is also undersized. So, one of our ideas is to take the stage out of the cafeteria, build a new stage in the back of the school facility, back of the gym, and make that more the multipurpose area and assembly space, so we could get some more space without incurring the costs of additional square footage inside the cafeteria space. We looked at a couple of different options on how we could renovate the building, and understand, really, our objective here wasn't to design this project, because this is extremely schematic, what we've done. In front of you, you have two different ideas. Ultimately, an architect's going to need to be hired to really go through the whole program in much more detail. Our objective really was to come up with some sort of schematic where we could at least be comfortable that we knew this number of square feet, which we've come up with about 10,000 or 11,000 square feet of additional footprint we believe you need. Now, the 10,000 or 11,000 square feet that we're adding to the building includes elimination of the modular classrooms, which are about 4,500 square feet. So, that, we figured that that's the amount of space that you need based on the program that we have to improve the core facilities and get the extra classrooms. Once we came up with that schematic, then we talked to some of our estimators that we work with, and we put a construction budget together on, not only on the cost of doing the addition, but the cost of also upgrading the rest of the facility that needs to be upgraded. There's many ADA violations of the building that need to be corrected, so we incorporated a number for that. One of the biggest things, the two biggest things we incorporated in addition to the upgrades and the addition is a fire sprinkler system is included in the budgets that we put together, as well as elimination of all the fire code violations that might exist in the building. And the fire sprinkler automatically eliminates some of those issues. And then the other thing, the other major component that we included was air conditioning and ventilation in the building to improve all the ventilation in the whole facility. So, we included money to basically redo the whole facility from that perspective also. And then lastly, we looked at parking, which is an issue over there, and circulation of the parking. And we plugged in, although we haven't done a site plan of it, we plugged in some money to be able to upgrade the parking areas also. Where the school facility is situated, really, your options, I think, are you expand towards the pod area, or you expand towards the back of the building, and those are the two schemes that you see in front of you. The cost estimates we've come up with are approximately the same whichever direction you go. But again, I encourage you really strongly not to focus on the design that's in front of you, but to just focus on the concept of the need for upgrading the core, the need for the 11,000 square feet. Tom?
You want to, Phil, if you could just briefly describe the differences between the two
Sure.
schematics in front of us? And if you had an opinion about, about them?
Well, the first schematic, which is actually on board here, the second one on your sheet, the schematic sheet. So, the main entrance to the building is down in this corner, the pod is over on this end over here. We basically kept the main structure intact here, and what we did was we created an outdoor courtyard area just outside where currently it's asphalted back to the building, and then we created a single loaded corridor that would just be basically where the existing modular classrooms are. The existing modular classrooms, you're not 100% familiar with the site, this is the site plan here, so we have the modular classrooms up here, the existing building. Basically, what we've done is we've continued the corridor, the addition along the back here, and then we connected back down just before you get to the pod area. So, the pod end of the building really doesn't change at all in this, in this scheme here. We've kept the pod, and we can do some work in cleaning up some of the interior parts of it. And then what we've done is we've added a stage at the back of the gymnasium, which currently, in fact, in the gymnasium, there's actually a storage room, which we replaced in the addition. And then internal work within the kitchen itself to get a second serving line, which we didn't actually lay out, but we put money in for. And then, as I said, take the stage out of the multipurpose room. The other plan, which is the first plan that I said there. We actually approached the addition down at the pod end of the building, and what we did was we took the three classrooms that are at the end of the pod, and then we continued those up and basically created an L at that end, with, again, creating an indoor, basically a courtyard where, if you remember, there used to be a modular in that area. So, the existing modular classrooms are back here. One of the advantages to this scheme is it leaves this whole play area behind the building as an open play area, and takes you a little bit away from the ball field. One of the downsides is the grade does drop off a little bit over there, but I don't think that it drops off somewhere, so it's not too much of an issue. But so, the advantage to this would be that it keeps this whole thing open. The advantage to the first scheme, I think, is that it keeps this end a little bit more open, you know, and it kind of, except, you know, those five classrooms are down there, but otherwise, it really kind of contains everybody in this space here. We looked at other options of building back behind the gymnasium and going back that way, but if you know the facility and the fields, the way they're set up over there, there's the ball field back here, and so you really can't go much further back than where the modular classrooms are before you start getting into an issue with the people that are playing ball back there and all the recreation that goes on back there. And then the other issue is that the property line is right along here, and the neighborhood is right here. So, we didn't want to get too close to the property line, we didn't want to get too close to the neighbors, so we're trying to keep all the construction down that way over there.
Thank you. Appreciate that. The point of this is just to help people visualize the kind of project we're talking about as opposed to a specific design. We have goals for the project that are listed in the background section of the ed specs. And again, this is just the first step in a very long process. I thought it'd be helpful for you to hear from an architect about the possibilities, so when it comes up, we can talk intelligently about it. So, if there's any questions about the ed specs or about the design, I think this would be the time.
Mrs. Brand.
A couple of things. One of the things that we don't have is pretty much the frame of reference of what Mr. Saron actually cited, some of it, like the difference in square footage. That's helpful to me as a board member, trying to frame not only what we're shooting, what we're shooting for, but really what the conditions currently are. I would like to see that as a frame of reference. I think it would be helpful for us, and I think moving forward, it would also be helpful. There, because I'm not sure what the conditions are. For instance, if we're talking about the music space, the library space, what exactly we have now, what we're moving towards. And the other thing, there were a couple of things in here that I hadn't seen before that were different. One of them was code, and it's towards the back, and it was actually citing acute hazardous material. And the only reason
Side of page?
Hold on a second, I'll have to go and look at it for you. As we're looking, it's further back, as I said, I actually, because this didn't have pages, so I
Really little, there's small numbers on the bottom of the page.
Is it 11, Sue?
Yeah, I probably wasn't looking in my glasses. Yes. Page 11.
Thank you.
We're getting very specific here as a board, and though this may be the practice, it was my understanding that, for instance, with asbestos, that at times, they choose not to touch it and to leave it alone, and that is the environmentally safe and appropriate thing to do. I don't want to necessarily be so specific in our ed specs that we also handcuff a building committee. And instead, I might be more inclined to want to hear or see in writing environmentally safe for the students in the school as opposed to getting so specific. There was another instance where we have a document also earlier about the roofing, and it is very specific to that as well. I don't recall us getting specific about what kind of roof is required, and in another instance, there was also a reference to the kind of facade. Again, I don't, I think we're going a little bit further than what I would expect a board to do. It's my understanding that educationally appropriate space is ours, and we determine the necessity of that. But I don't know that the kind of roof we have, that the kind of facade that we have, whether on-site, how to best address some of the environmental hazards, as long as we are assured that it is an environmentally safe site. To me, that would be paramount, certainly. But I don't know if it's for us to dictate how it gets managed. There were, it was, it was just a little bit of a shift, and I think, you know, we're trying to be specific here, but I think it's not our job. That's a building committee's job to do a lot of those things. My other question was also relative to the cost. In our long-range plan, we have this estimated for 9 million. I'm assuming that Mr. Saron's presentation is still staying within that, those parameters? And we also had a site assessment. Do we have any cost out as to what the site assessment would cost, and was that inclusive of the 9 million?
That's a lot of questions.
I know.
So, I don't even know where to start. Tom, you want to address the hazardous materials part? Maybe we should start with that?
Okay.
And what role they play in ed specs and the specificity of them versus the general? Perhaps this is a good time to talk about that.
Thank you. Sal Morbido. Couple of the items that were pointed out have been in previous ed specs. The roofing system was in the previous ed spec for Straffield Elementary, did not present a challenge to the building committee, was also in the Fairfield Woods ed spec, and that was discussed, and was not a particular problem for a building committee. The multi-plant systems do have greater benefit for the school system, longer, longer life, better performance. The exterior envelope statement about materials inconsistency, that was added specifically for Straffield, because there was such a great concern that it was in harmony, you didn't want a glass tower added on to that beautiful historic building. That was kept there, that's a subjective statement, so I, there's a lot that can go into that from a building committee or a design standpoint, what is the consistency? But that was very specific for Straffield. Again, the code issue about abatement of hazardous, hazardous material, that primarily revolves around floor tiles. It becomes a greater problem later on, it becomes a greater abatement problem if you go over and encapsulate floor tiles, pipe insulation, things like that. It drives up the cost for further, future projects. So, that's why we're specific about that. Let Tom take over for somebody else.
The last one is on the cost. And the reason we got an architect involved early with our technical consulting account, Board of Ed account, was to bring them in, and we're going to do this in the future with some of the larger projects that we present to the town bodies, was to confirm the number we did internally. And his number, both of the schemes, is around 10 million.
It's 10,940,000.
So, about roughly 11 million dollars.
And the issue we have is, when we originally looked at this, we had to incorporate the roof warranty projects we're trying to do on five schools, Riverfield is one of them. So, our number carries the roof warranty number. If that doesn't get approved by the town bodies, that number comes out, and a whole roof replacement will have to be folded in, because eventually, by the time we probably do this project, we'll need to do the whole roof at that school.
Not to put you on the spot, but roughly, what would a whole new prop?
We're probably looking at about a million dollars, about a million dollars to do a roof. Now, that school, we did do the pod roof over, and we did the connector to the pod. Those have been done in the past 10 years, but the major part of the roof wouldn't come up.
So, you're comfortable with giving an estimate of 11 million?
Right now, depending on what they do with the roof warranty piece. The roof warranty is to do a certain amount of work on that roof now, to the tune of about 100 or 200,000 dollars to get another five to 10 years out of that roof. If that happens, we'll incorporate that into this project, and any penetrations we do will have to be done per the standards of the manufacturer. If that warranty roof project doesn't get approved by the RTM, then that number comes out, and we'll have to figure in with the building committee doing a new roof there.
Right, and that could be approximately 1 million dollars. I won't hold you to that, but
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there a follow-up? Sure.
Relative to the estimate, that site has had a lot of water issues and leaking. What my question is relative to this is, is this price that we have built in with a contingency? And if we do need to do remediation based on what they find there, are we going to be able to handle that?
Yes. There is a contingency built in, there's a section on the bottom, soft costs, and what I want to bring your attention to, I'm not sure the new members have this, but our long-range facility plan has a really nice breakdown of this project and what's included and what's not. There's a descriptive breakdown, and there's a cost breakdown. I would recommend you take a look at that while looking at the ed specs and the drawings we gave you tonight.
Mr. Carey.
So, to answer your question, Madam Chair, the last RTM meeting was a great debate about roofs and the consensus, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Collin, was $26.50 a square foot. Riverfield currently is about 45,000 square feet, less whatever they've done in the pod. Okay. That, that's the first part. My question to the Chair, to Mr. Collin or his team, I see that we have some stuff going on here with the gym. Is this going to go within the existing footprint of the gymnasium, or is there a plan to expand the footprint of the gymnasium?
It'll expand a little bit.
Okay.
Our intent with some of the elementary schools is the APRs are Our intent with some of the elementary schools is the APRs are small. When we start to expand the kitchens, do two serving lines, and try and fit 200-plus kids in there. So what we're looking at is, an inexpensive way to deal with it is to remove the stage out of the APR and expand the floor area, which already exists there, and put the stage in the gym. And we've talked with the principal, and I want to apologize, I didn't introduce the principal. He's here tonight, Paul Toaso. We've had meetings with him, and from the principals, they tell us that the stage works well in the gym. It's a big area, it's a big place. We can put a venue of kids and parents. So there's a, right now, there's a storage room that's added on on the end of the gym. That could get added further with an addition, small addition, that's cheap space to build, storage. And then where the storage room is could be a stage built in the gym. So essentially, the gym gets expanded.
And as a follow-up to that, is there any plans to expand the actual square footage of the gym itself, being one of the smaller gyms in the district, and a gym because we're going to be putting upwards of 500 kids in the school that will be double-loaded a lot of the time?
It's something we can look at when the building committee gets involved, what the expense would be when we add on the storage room and do the stage, and look at the structural members. You know, they're probably spaced every 20 feet, the column spacing that's holding the beams, so it's something we can look at. We haven't ruled it out.
Thank you.
Mr. Fattaby?
All right, thank you. I just have a few sort of basic or simple questions, just as I did review these ed specs. One is relatively specific, though, and that's on page six, I believe, where it sort of identifies the characteristics of the different classrooms, specifically the heading homeroom classrooms for grades K through 5, 24-classroom model. Just, to me, that was a little confusing in the sense that I'm uncertain whether all the classrooms contain all those or only some of the classrooms contain all those items. One of the items in particular is water fountains. Is it the intent to put a water fountain in each classroom, then, or is that something that, I don't know if it, how you interpret that?
No, that wouldn't be every classroom.
All right. As well as work areas with sink running and water and drain, I think-
That's a yes.
That's all classrooms?
That's a yes.
All right. So that cleared up a little confusion. The other comment, I guess, sort of a general nature I have, is that I noticed on page eight of the ed spec here, you have, in essence, enrollment projections and proposed capacity. It's noted that these ed specs are proposed to be a capacity of 504 students. But yet, we're not going to get to that capacity for more than eight years out, approximately. So the question I have, are we eligible for state reimbursement when the capacity is not reached until a substantial period of time out in the future?
Yeah, the state has a formula for reimbursement, which goes something like this. You're assigned a number, percentage number, which I think is, in our case, I mean the number, 20-something percent.
25.71.
All right. So to get your full 25.71%, in addition to that applying only to eligible expenses, they do make a determination about whether you are within the space standards allowance that the state. And the way the state does that is they take your highest projected enrollment for the next eight years, and they multiply it by their formula, and they will reduce, to the extent you don't meet that, they reduce your actual reimbursement by that percentage. So it's not an all or nothing. There's a reduction, so, and if you're, so if you're only over by a little bit, then your reimbursement gets reduced just by a little bit. So we might go from 25% on eligibles to 24%. But it's not like it disappears off the face of the earth. Based on, I actually asked this question of these guys when we were looking at this. We're very close on this to being right within the allowable number. So we don't see a big deduct for exceeding the space requirements. But they actually do have a formula. It's so many square feet per kid that they will reimburse. Not that they're saying that's the ideal. That's just all they'll pay for. And it depends on whether, and kindergarten kids get so many square feet and so forth. So it's the right question to ask, but it's really a state formula. It really shouldn't hurt us. We can actually calculate that very precisely once we know, you have to know the actual number of square feet you're going to build.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. That's your sermon on space standards allowance. You're getting a little bit about everything in this job. How'd I do, guys? All right.
The other real quick question I have with respect to the ed specs is that on page 12 of the education specifications, on the section headed Interior Building Environment Mechanical Systems, there's a breakout of mechanical electrical plumbing systems, which would be separately and independently commissioned, in essence, directly by the building committee and the Board of Education. Is there a specific reason, or is that typically why you'd break out that section for a specific, I guess, separate selection and approval?
Like you talk about commissioning in general, it's a, I think it's an important thing to do because it basically keeps the construction manager and design team on their toes to build to the specs that you're called for in the construction documents. So I think it is worthwhile to have it. It's an expense borne, and it's a reimbursable expense. As to why or whether or not it would be in ed specs, I'll pass over to the team here.
There is a, there is a state statute that requires that projects that receive more than $2 million worth of reimbursement are supposed to follow the Connecticut High Performance Building Standard. And a basic tenet of that is separate and independent commissioning, separate from the design professionals, separate from the construction management team. They want them not beholden to anybody, but quote-unquote, the owner, which would be the Board of Education and the building committee. So that's a requirement indirectly of state law through one of the standards it references.
Which is a breakout of that mechanical electrical plumbing only, though. I mean, that's the breakout.
The MEPs, right. Commissioning of MEP systems.
All right. So that's a requirement of state statute. That's the gist of what I understand.
Yes.
The other comment that I guess have here is on page 13 of these educational specifications, where it's referring to the interior spaces and the fit-out, in essence, of those new, of, in essence, both the new space, which is obviously going to be fit out with new equipment and furniture, which is, I think, appropriately incorporated within the ed specs and with this particular process of renovation. But also is included in here is the existing spaces, where you're going to replace any furniture in fair and poor condition, or poor condition. And I guess the query I have is that whether in view of the interest in costing things out and the concerns one has as to how big a number one gets in these capital projects, would it be advisable, in essence, not to have the existing spaces and the capital replacement of furniture in those to keep the overall cost of the project somewhat lower? But I fully understand the rationale in the sense that if you don't do it now, you may not get it done in the future. But I think that may raise some issues to people that review this, that we're, in essence, piggybacking or tying in replacement within this project of existing spaces. So that's my concern, is the review of other bodies saying, is that really necessary in these ed specs in view of the desire of many town bodies to keep the cost as low as possible?
Talk about that. Go ahead.
Part of the point is when the Bureau of School Facilities reviews plans, they not only look at the, I'm sorry. When the Bureau of School Facilities reviews the building plans, they also review furniture and equipment, not only for the new spaces, but also in existing spaces. They'll be looking for handicap accessibility and appropriateness of the equipment. That's part of the reason why that section states that there shall be a survey, because it's something that will be needed. Fair and poor condition was something that was brought up in the Straffield ed spec. There was a, not in the ed spec, but in the development of the project. How do you handle, what furniture needs to be replaced? You wouldn't replace one item just because you're doing it for handicap. This table's not handicap accessible when the next one, right next to it, is in the exact same condition. So that was kind of a way to handle that particular issue. Some of it has to be replaced because of code issues and state review. Some of it is, you're going to replace it because it's the exact same thing you're replacing for that handicap reason. And it may be reimbursable. Okay, thank you.
I was going to wait to go. Mr. Lo?
Yeah, a question on the schematic here of, for both plans. The multipurpose or the all-purpose room and the kitchen and the boiler room and the stage that's currently there, that's what exists now, that kitchen. And so you're comfortable that with the stage being removed, that's going to, then, even though they're having trouble now delivering the lunch at, what, 300 and almost 400 students, that even with the stage removed, you're going to be able to have enough room there to serve lunch for all the kids? And then the kitchen also hasn't changed size at all?
Correct. Until, until we get into the real details, when there's a building committee and an architect looking at it, we found with the kitchens that the additions we're putting on are a walk-in freezer, cooler, and some added storage. And those are easily put onto a lot of the kitchens at the elementary schools because they have an exterior door leading to the outside. The APR at Riverfield isn't the smallest in the district. It's not ideal to just expand the stage out of there and the floor area, but it's a very good design and an easy way to do it. The concrete's already there, the walls are already there. We're just taking the wood stage down, and it expands an area for about eight more tables.
Yeah, I mean, I'm concerned about that because I know that's one of the largest, besides space for the kids, this is one of the largest problems with this particular site. And I wonder if it's really going to be able to do it, or will it drive up the cost by when we get to the building committee? So, just a question.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Confortito?
Yeah, a couple issues, and again, along Mr. Lo's train of thought. From my recollection from previous years dealing on facilities committees, is that this school, Sherman School, will build approximately the same time, same footprint, same, you know, box-type construction. So I would anticipate that that kitchen would go through the same type of renovation that Sherman is proposed to go through, or currently going through at this point in time. To get a two-line facility in there. Okay. And then back to Mr. Fattaby's point about furnitures, fixtures, and equipment. I would much rather have that stayed very much along the lines that it did when we did Sherman and Osborne, considering that there are, I think, four existing portables outside at this point in time?
Five.
Five, okay. That that equipment will be reused as appropriate and new. I mean, we're essentially adding five classrooms to this building. We're taking the five portables and making them permanent structures.
Yep, five general classrooms. There's other deficiencies.
I mean, the other deficiencies would be your music room, your special ed rooms, your science room, and so forth. But I would like that to be a little bit more specific, that we're reusing that because I think that's something the town bodies are looking for us to be responsible for in that. So I'd be looking for something along those lines to assure town bodies that we're not discarding the equipment that's out there, that we're going to reuse that. Other than that, I mean, it's essentially what was done at Osborne and at Sherman with adding on, you know, a five-pack, however you do it. My other question, and I guess this is more to administration, is from this point forward, when we go to a 504, we do a school renovation, is it going to be standard practice to have a science room, a music room, two teaching rooms for music, and a separate practice room? Is that what our standard is?
Yeah, and I think that's, it in projects, I don't think that's new to this. Tom, you want to talk about that?
Yes, that is the standard. The 504 scheme is that scheme, and that's the scheme we worked with the MGT of America on the enrollment projections and its capacity deficiencies.
I understand the 504 scheme, and my calculation shows this building being about 15,000 square feet shy of Burr. Okay. Burr being 70,000 plus, this with the addition being somewhere around 56,000. If, and our facilities, long-range facilities plan shows other school renovations down the line, when we renovate another school that's not going to be renovated to a 504 level, will we be accounting for those special classroom designations in those schools that are not 504s?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brand?
Two things. One, I noticed that we also have computer labs in here. Is this the direction that we want to continue to move in? Or are we looking at technology that might, even five years down the road, not necessitate a separate computer room? And that's, I guess, through the Chair to Dr. Tidal. The other thing that I'd be willing to do with the board members, it has been this body's practice, just as we did this evening, to have a presentation, and then the following subsequent meeting, have a vote. We're talking about almost 11 million dollars. And I know a lot of the members here were at a Cabe convention, didn't get home to Saturday afternoon. It's also just the weekend before Thanksgiving. And if board members would be interested, I'd be willing to have, offer up an emotion that we defer this project vote till December 7th, which I believe is our next board meeting.
The 13th, I think, is our next meeting.
The 13th is the next board meeting.
I'm sorry. Is that a motion?
Well, let me, do you want me to answer the question with the computer lab first, or do you want to just make a motion and see where it goes? Up to you. What do you want me to do?
Do you want to answer on the computer labs? Yes, please.
I think at the elementary level, I think that we're going to still need to have a separate space for a computer lab because I think that's when, you know, you still need a lot of that direct instruction in a space tied into the library media program. I think down the road, as the technology evolves, we may find we can reuse that space for a different purpose. I think we may be moving away from that at certain, at the upper levels as the technology expands and our wireless gets better. I don't think we're quite there yet at the elementary level. It does then turn out to be, you know, a swing space. If we do need it for something else, we would reuse, you know, we could reuse it. But right now, I think it's still a key part of the program. You want to, do you have a motion?
If you don't mind, we can actually do a sentence of the body. I don't want to waste people's time. I can either do a motion, your choice.
Motion would be fine.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we postpone the decision on this project until the next board meeting, December 13th.
Is there a second? Mrs. Canelli, discussion on the amendment. Mr. Fattaby?
It's a question whether or not the, I know the Board of Selectmen have requested some of this information, and I'm not familiar with the Board of Selectmen's schedule. So does anyone know whether or not the Board of Selectmen are planning to meet prior to our next board meeting on December 13? And would be looking for this information or this?
Well, they're meeting before then. Whether this is on the agenda or not, I don't know.
Okay.
I did say that it may be possible to, that we could continue to move this along at the Board of Selectmen level with the draft here, which gives the basic scope of the work and probably gives them enough to go on in terms of a building committee. So I don't see this approval holding up the selectmen moving forward, but that's just a hunch on my part that they draft specs that are generally in the ballpark will do the job. At this point, they're not approving the project as such. We're just trying to get a building committee seated. It's safer to approve them, but if you're not comfortable approving them, I don't think postponing it is a huge risk.
All right, thank you. I guess with that, I would probably, since the time does not seem of the essence, the ed specs, I think, are a critical document in directing the committee in the future. I think that waiting that period of time for further review and possible slight modifications is probably appropriate, and I'd probably support that motion. Thank you.
Mr. Carey?
Well, Mr. Fattaby answered my main question, so thank you. Just as a point of clarification, since we have a whole new board here. The Board of Ed has voted and approved this project, and we're seeking a building committee. Ed has voted and approved this project, and we're seeking a building committee. I've witnessed as a board member and a parent for these projects, Raffield, Sherman, Osborne Hill, and Fairfield Woods, and this is the first time I've seen ed specs prior to a building committee being formed. They're generally pretty boilerplate. What we're looking for is a certain amount of space for each room and mechanical, and a lot of it is state legislated that the team's going to do, things the team has to have built in so that we can get our reimbursement. So I'm not sure if, since the body is that there's board members who want to make changes to these ed specs, I'm not aware that we have architectural school engineers on our team here, but if there's something specific that we really want to discuss, I guess I could be open to this motion. But my other side of me is saying, if the Board of Selectmen has asked for this, and this does seem pretty standardized, to Mr. Convertino's question before, one of the things that we worked on, and I'm hoping that the administration can get to the new board members, was this report with MGT last year, which gives a definitive measure by which you can add up the spaces in a school and figure out the bare minimum you're going to need to hold those students, which is good. So you can actually go through it, figure out the simple math, count how many classrooms you're going to need. We're going to have about 10 more classrooms here to actually meet all the needs of the 502, 504. But I don't want to be, I don't want to be impotent in the process either. If the Board of Selectmen wants to see this and we feel that getting them this information faster will get us a building committee faster, I also want to consider that. And I'd like to hear what other board members have to say about this and think about it, if there really is board members who want to bring changes to these specs, or if we can move them forward. The key thing here is we have five portables that are 10 to 11 years old that have a useful life of 10 years. They'll last a little longer, but the trajectory of these projects is usually three to five years. So the longer we hold it up, the bigger the chance that we were going to have a problem with those portables. So I'd be curious if anyone else really has any changes they want to make to the specs that would hold this up tonight, or if it would make sense just to move forward, not following those motions.
Mrs. Cannelli?
Just a question to Mr. Carey. You made reference to that normally you don't see the ed specs prior to it going to a building committee?
Typically, what I, the process I've seen, the process we've followed, and this only dates back to about 2006, so it could be, been a different process prior to that, has been that the facilities plan had all the detail of what we were doing, what we were asking for, and it has a lot of specifications. It's what the district's asking for to meet the educational needs. One of the challenges we had is we didn't have a blue plate, a blueprint for what the educational spaces, especially core spaces, should look like. And we had the outside consultant, MGT, help us with that. So now we kind of have a blueprint of what the standard spaces look like. The team tells us what they need to build, deliver the program at elementary level, the middle school level, high school level. And the bottom line is that the ed specs themselves are really how the Board of Ed makes its request. Once we make this request, it goes to the building committee. The town can build whatever it wants, as long as there's X amount of thousand-square-foot kindergarten classrooms, and X amount of 750 to 800 square-foot regular-sized classrooms, and X amount of space for the special ed and OTPT. So this is how the Board of Ed has its influence in that process, because they have to build it to the ed spec. What form it goes in is up to the town and the town building committee and the other bodies. So that's, this is really the only place that we have influence. The actual decision to go forward and ask for Riverfield next is one that we made a few months back. I don't remember exactly what date it was. I don't know if that helps answers your question, or?
Not exactly.
Okay.
The point being that Dr. Title has said that, as a draft, that it would not be holding up. I mean, because I completely agree. It's not that I want to gum up the works, because this is clearly the priority. It's what's been agreed on, we're moving ahead with that. But if a draft will suffice, I guess I'm not, you're, on the one hand, you're saying they have to build to the ed specs. On the other hand, you're saying we give them directions and then what they will do with it as they will. So therefore, I'm not quite comfortable in how specific we need to be, how specific bind it is, and what is going to happen from here, because then it's in the intention to the details.
My understanding, and the administration corrected me if I'm wrong, was I'm a volunteer in the Borlaqueer, but my understanding is, following this process, that we ask for what the need is, right? And the town decides how they're going to address that need, what form it'll take. Okay? The town might come back and say, you need this many spaces, we're going to give you 10 portables. Now, that could be a discussion between us and the town. But that could technically doubtful, but technically it could happen. The way the board, the board's role is to basically request what's educationally appropriate, what's necessary to run the program. And that's our, that's our role, and we do that through the ed specs. And that's all through state statute, basically. So that's our influence. If they want to build it as a circular silo, as long as it's not too many floors for an elementary school, they can. They want to build what Mr. Serones, or some variation of what Mr. Serone is recommending, they could do that. That's a collaboration between the town, the Board of Ed, and the building committee, essentially.
In the interest of moving this along, I'm sorry, do you have a follow-up on that?
So in other words, for example, then, where it says on page, sorry, page eight, the support services, so just to make clear for myself your point, we can request that we need a room that involves instructional improvements, school psychologist, social worker, and then, for example, in the footprint we have here, or in the diagram, we see that they combined the gifted and the Spanish space. So that's what you mean in terms of, we ask for this, but how they actually make it happen, that's not what we're dealing with?
If, no, I don't think that's, in terms of what you're looking at, I believe that's something that our team has put together. And this is not a final architectural drawing. That would be something that would be a lot more expensive and a lot more thorough that would come through a building committee once it's been funded by the town. This is kind of a preliminary, if I understand correctly, Mr. Colm, if he's still here, is a preliminary schematic. So the fact that those two are put together probably means it makes sense to have them together in a shared space per the administration, because this is, this is our material. This doesn't go onto a building committee. We're still waiting for that and hopeful that we will get a building committee forum for the project. We can take it offline, too, if you want.
In the interest of summation, this is a, this is a request of what we need. It will then go to a building committee that will work out the fine details of how this happens, so that when it comes back to us for final approval, we will say you met what we needed for our district, and we will approve or disapprove of the project, and whether or not we accept the issue. If I could offer a few thoughts on this. This is something that's really important because the board really needs to be behind it and supportive of it. And if you're not comfortable with it, then I would say to hold off to the December 13th meeting so we can make any small changes. I don't think that there's any, the sense I'm getting from the table is that there aren't any big substantive changes. If there are minor ones that can be taken care of tonight, that I'd say move it along. But if not, and we're not all on board with it, then my recommendation would be to go ahead and to vote to postpone this until December 13th. But the thing that you need to keep in the back of your mind is, the longer we take to get through this process, the longer it's going to be before you see a building committee come to fruition. And the history in this town is, things take a ridiculously long time to get done. So I just caution you as you think about that. If you're looking at these ed specs and you think that you are comfortable with them and that we can make minor changes that you would be voting in favor of tonight, then I would say vote down the amendment. If not, and you would rather that we take this up on December 13th, that's fine. Just know that it's going to be that much longer to get it to the Board of Selectmen. I see Mr. Convertito and then Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, just two quick points. One, I prefer not to send a draft to the first selectman. I'd rather send a final document. I don't think that any, there are any major changes to be in this, other than, my experience has been, on the town side and building committees, and the frustration from town boards has been what everybody terms as scope creep. And I think this document needs to be tight so that there is no scope creep, okay, that's attributable to us. If a building committee creates scope creep, it's not because we weren't specific in what we said. That being said, I think the language that we've talked about tonight, I think it'd be tightened up, and I don't think we need to wait till the 13th. I think we can just be specific and then pass it to the special meeting, because I don't think, I just think the language is just a matter of tightening it up. I don't think there's any major changes to the document. And if we want to go through it now, and I'll give you my suggestions, and do that, that's fine.
Mrs. Iacono?
Yes.
Perhaps what we could do in the interest of time, and also to give some of the board members, we already have a meeting on December 1st, if we want to add that. I'm just, you know, I'm trying to give us a compromise. The other thing, there is a-
I'm looking at my calendar, I don't want anyone to think.
No, I know, I know. We, there is a timeline with this. I mean, we do have a presentation, if you will, that goes to the first selectman, the Board of Selectmen decides on establishing a building committee, and they will then send a charge. And then the number and people that the first selectman nominates then also have to go through the RTM. So we do have some time. I mean, it's a long process as you go along. Traditionally, we have not done ed specs upfront. It is a request, and I think what they're looking for is the scope. I think they want to know roughly what they're entertaining. And again, I think if we want to look at it on the first, I think that should be able to work out fine. So if you want me to amend it to the first, I'd be happy to do that. It could be a friendly amendment to move it to the first.
My only commentary on that is that it's a special meeting that's now kind of becoming cumbersome. I'm looking at the calendar. I believe this Board of Selectmen will meet again December 21st. So if we miss the December meeting, we can get this settled December 13th, and we can try and get it on for the 21st. So I, that would be my recommendation as we contemplate that. So we're, to move, to move this, to go ahead. I would recommend if we're not all comfortable with it, you don't think that there's minor changes that can be done right now, in the interest of making everybody comfortable with this, because it's an important and large expenditure for the town, then I would say go ahead and wait. So I'll take, any more board comment on just the amendment, and then I'd like to go to the public. Mr. Lou?
I just would like to say that I always find our past practice in having large, complicated documents and issues that are going to be voted on right away, instead, what we used to do was to present it at one meeting, have the time to look at it and to vote on it the next, is so important, because I think, again, as Mr. Convertito said, to tighten things up, what was once a $9 million project is now being looked at as $11, and I think I'd like to see why it comes to that. I know you talked about, are you talking about it's from $9 to $11 because of the roof, or it's $9 to $11 because of some new things, and the roof might be more? I think these things need to be clarified, because, as you just said, we are presenting a very big, important project, and I think it's, it shows if we take the due diligence and the time to do this the right way the first time, it looks better on us and it gets us better as we go for other projects down the line.
Thank you. May I have public comment just on this particular motion? On the postpone, motion to postpone.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent.
Just on the, just on to whether or not we should postpone it. Okay, seeing none, back to the board. All in favor of postponing this item until December 13th? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. We will take this item up again at the December 13th meeting. Okay, presentation of the draft 2012-2013 calendar. This evening, this is just a presentation of this. This will be a voting item, Dr. Title, at the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes. That's been the board's practice.
Yep.
However, we would, if board members have changes they're going to want to recommend, we'd just like to know about it now. This calendar mirrors the CES calendar that Mrs. Brand talked about. It also mirrors the features of the calendar that we have had for the last couple of years here. So there are no substantive changes to it. There have been some slight modifications about when we do conferences at the elementary and middle school in October. There's still the same number of them, they've just been moved around slightly. It contemplates a school year ending on June 18th. It provides for three cancellation days before we take the April vacation. And so it's basically the existing calendar carried forward to next year. That's my presentation.
Mrs. Brand?
It's come up before, but again, and I'm fully aware of the CES schedule as well, but have we looked at and considered seriously what it would look like if we didn't have a February and April, but instead had a March? Would there be any cost savings with that? There are issues with coordinating it with other districts, I'm aware.
You wouldn't want to have a vacation in March because of CMT and CAP testing. That's the biggest issue.
So we, there's-
March is not a month for a vacation.
How many weeks does, does the CMTs?
That stretches out for almost the whole month, including makeups and possible snow that occurs and so forth.
So that when people ask us about-
People that have, you know, people that have shortened the February break have generally just left the one in April, and that's pretty much the end of it. March is just, I would not, from an educational point of view, recommend taking a week off in the middle of CMT and CAP.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I just had one question about the November 12th date, because I know that's for Veterans Day, but, you know, Veterans Day is observed on the actual, on the 11th, and I actually looked it up just out of curiosity to see, and, you know, the post offices and the banks, I believe, are closed on the 12th, but most of the commemoration events, if not all of them, will take place on the 11th. I just didn't know, because we're gaining a day off in September because the Jewish holidays last year, this past year, it was on a Saturday, I believe, Yom Kippur. Now, we've got two holidays in September, and I just didn't know if that was something. I know that obviously, when Veterans Day is on a weekday, it's important, and it has been important in the past, to not have school that day, but I just thought since it is on the Sunday, and it's not as if there will be any ceremonies taking place, as far as I could tell, just from my kind of cursory search for things, I just didn't know if that was something we'd want to consider or not. That's just a question.
It's an option. I have no opinion on it.
Mrs. Cannelli?
The two dates, I would agree with Mrs. Gerber. I would very much want to entertain the idea of having school on November 12th. I think the issue of not having school on Veterans Day, period, is something else I'd be curious about broaching, but this one, it clearly is not Veterans Day. And secondly, I'm curious about the placement of January 18th. I understand it gives us a four-day weekend. As someone who doesn't ski, I care a little bit less, but I was curious about that placement from the high school perspective. Would they be better served by having the professional, the placement of that professional day after midterm exams?
We can ask, I don't know. I think it's been a comfortable time, because exams can move around depending on what happens with snow, too. So sometimes that hits right around it, sometimes it doesn't. That's traditionally when we've had it, but can it be moved? You know, of course. I do want to say about the 12th, just so you understand, there's a human resources part of that. Many of our employees are contracted to have a holiday on November 11th. And so those days have to be complied with. So we would need to, it's not the end of the world, but we would need to, you know, reassign that to a different day off for the staff that are entitled to it, because staff members that wouldn't ordinarily work on there are similar to what we do with Columbus Day. We'd have to find another day in the calendar for the staff to have off and to close the district if we held on the 12th. It's, you know, just, that's just a small point, we could deal with it, I just want to point that out.
Mr. Convertito?
How many staff members is that, Dr. Taylor?
All 12-month employees. I'm looking at Margaret Mary. Are you nodding?
You can go to maintenance, specify the contract, it's just important here.
Right.
What's the term of those contracts? What do they got?
We just renewed them. We just renewed them.
Right.
Yep. Mr. Fattabean.
If I understand correctly, is the 12th a federal holiday for Veterans Day? Is that still a federal holiday? Is that when it's observed as a federal holiday? Does anyone know? The 12th?
I'm sure that's what it is, right? Yeah.
Right, so that would be the federal holiday for Veterans Day would be November 12th?
No post office.
Right. And, right, it's a federal holiday. I guess my concern would be that, now, in this year, Veterans Day, it is a federal holiday, but it does not coincidentally fall on actual Veterans Day, which is, I guess, the 11th, as I understand what you said. So the question arises as, would you then have Veterans Day off depending on whether or not it fell on a weekday or not? Is that confusing, or should you set a policy whereby Veterans Day, when it's celebrated as a federal holiday, is just off? I mean, that's, I guess, I'm trying to avoid confusion in the future whether people realize, do we have Veterans Day off? Don't we have Veterans Days off? If you had set a policy whereby you have it off when it's a federal holiday and it's celebrated, then it's easy for people to understand when it is off and when it's not. So that was my concern with adjusting the calendar for those views. I guess, and what's the, would then you, was indicated, if you don't have that as a day off, it's not your intent to add a day of school, but it's your intent to take another day off some other time. Is that correct?
No, that would be a school day. There are districts that hold it. The day, the year would end a year earlier.
A day earlier.
So, right, so the thing is-
Day earlier.
I'm sorry.
Kids love you.
So you're not extending the length of the school year at all by getting rid of a vacation day. You're just shifting when that vacation is taken. So you're still, what the real purpose is, I'm uncertain then, because-
You'd get out a day earlier.
Right. The year would then end on June 17th for students if you went to school on November 12th. The 12-month staff would have a day assigned as a day off.
I guess I'm failing to see what the benefit of that is. Ending at the 18th or the 17th, is that a big benefit? I don't know. Maybe some people have thoughts on that. I don't know the benefit. The 17th is a Monday, too, and it's going to be very low attendance, I think, on that Monday.
Just a first discussion. If somebody wants to open up a motion at the next meeting to-
Next meeting, you can make a motion to amend it, and if you get five votes, then it changes. If you don't get five votes, it doesn't change. Pretty simple.
Yep. I will remind the board that this was an extremely controversial issue a couple of years back. I don't know that you want to go there, but I'll leave that to your own decide, to decide. Any other comments on the calendar? I just have, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Confortito, I don't think you've come.
Yeah. I can tell you from the last three and a half months of being out there talking to people that people would like to see this calendar shortened up and tightened up. I think that's one of the reasons we're bringing up Veterans Day. And I would be in favor of eliminating the February vacation. And I think next year is a great opportunity to do it because you can move the April break up two weeks and start it on the 29th of March through the first week of April. And you would shorten this school year up, and you'd be out sometime around the 11th or 12th. Then if you get five or six snow days, which has been the case in the last two or three years, we're not pushing the Fourth of July weekend. And I really think that we need to seriously consider that. We're heating the schools during February anyhow. It's not like we're saving any money by sending the kids home. And I think we need to really have a serious discussion about shortening up the school year and eliminating the February break.
My only thought was, I've gotten a lot of feedback on when we start school, and why do we start on a Thursday when other districts start on Monday? So I just would want us to maybe consider starting on Wednesday as opposed to, starting on the Wednesday rather than the Thursday. And then that would, then my recommendation would be that the first four cancellation days would extend the school year rather than then hitting into April break. So that's sort of my thought process there.
Just to be clear, the only way that would work would be if there was a staff work day on Friday, August 24th.
Yes.
Okay.
So staff might not like me all that much, but I might get to preserve their April vacation.
Yeah, I'm just, not stating an opinion, just a consequence.
I'm just throwing that out there for food for thought for the next meeting. And I do just want to make a public service announcement on this because the board gets multitudes of email on our calendar when we've lost a day or have to make up a day, or what happens with the calendar day, and why aren't you doing it in February, and why are you doing it in April? This is your opportunity, I'm informing the public right now, that we will be voting on this calendar on December 13th. If you have things that you want to express to the board, now is the time to let us know that you don't want X, Y, or Z, or you do want A, B, C. And other than that, there's not much we can do when you write and tell us you want February taken off and not April. We need to hear from you now, so.
As in next meeting?
Yes, December 13th.
Not now, not-
Yeah, sorry. And that's my little, that's my little pitch from the board. Public comments and petitions. We will now hear public comments. Our rules are written on the agenda.
Good evening. Ellen Coroglian, 246 Old Spring Road, Fairfield. Happy to be retired now, however, I came especially because of the presentation on the music curriculum. It's a fine curriculum. It's interesting and coincidental that the music curriculum and the board specs for buildings should be on the same committee, same evening, same agenda. The pictures were wonderful, but you would not be able to see those same pictures in every single school. We have 11 elementary schools, and people know their own school, or they might know somebody else's school, but they might not know all 11. And space is an issue. I came here in 1984 with a letter to the Board of Education about space for music, and there's not consistently been a music, dedicated music building room in every building. So I would ask the board to consider that very carefully when you approve the Board of Education curriculum for music. The 2000 version, and I was one of the people who wrote that one, did have a declarative statement giving the specifications that were, we really needed and able to implement the curriculum as written. An example in this case, and I'm not sure, I didn't see that that declaration for space requirements was a part of this presentation to you. I didn't hear it, and I haven't seen it. An example would be under the category of movement. Locomotion is simply just walking. But if I personally took eight steps forward and eight steps back, I would need considerable amount of space. If I had 20 children doing the same thing, I would need more space. So space has to be set aside for that. It's not equitable in all the buildings in town, and even the buildings that have music rooms still have some music classes in the classroom. So possibly, you might want to check and see where music is being taught. We didn't see pictures of music being taught on the stage, but it is. And we didn't see pictures of music classes in the auditorium. I personally, as a music teacher, spent one afternoon in June about eight years ago teaching a class outside, and I got a suntan as a result of that. And I got a compliment on my evaluation from the principal thanking me for being so creative. But that's not what music teachers look for. We look for the tools to be able to do what we need to do to help children learn.
Thank you.
So I'd ask you to look for space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, open board comment. Anybody? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Didn't see you.
Hi, Neil Fink. I first want to take an opportunity to congratulate all of the new board members and wish everybody the best of luck.
Thanks. Can you state your address?
Oh, 70 Crest Terrace.
Thank you.
Of course, I'm disappointed that I'm not sitting in one of those chairs this evening, but my commitment to the schools is still unwavering, and it just means I'm going to have to work much harder to make sure that the issues I'm concerned about and that the people I spoke with were concerned about, that those remain on the agenda. So don't think I'm going anywhere, any of you, you know? If you're smart, you'll help me find a job in some other town or something, I don't know. Just very quickly, after serving on a building committee and working on lots and lots of school projects around the state, I just want to make a few comments about the ed spec that hopefully you'll consider. One is something that I think was never thought about and never in the ed spec, but was brought up tonight by the architect. Whether the stage is in the APR or the gym, I really believe is something that should be thought out and defined in the ed spec. The gymnasiums tend to be used all day, every day, for gym classes. If you then eliminate the stage from the APR, it means that music programs and even after-school, you know, theater and drama programs that might want to use that stage will likely be prevented from using it because the gyms are used all day. They're often used after school for various sporting activities. So that's something that should be addressed in the ed spec. And then, another recommendation I would make that may or may not, by statute, be something that can be put in, directly in the ed spec, but I would strongly encourage this board to find a way to work more closely with the town and come up with a system in light of what Mrs. Brand was saying, that I sort of disagree with that comment about the roofs. I think it's important that the board actually put as many specifics as possible into that ed spec. And for one simple reason, the town builds a building, and then this board owns it and has to maintain it. And I would strongly suggest that you request from the Board of Selectmen as part of the charge for the building committee, that they have a requirement to-
If you could wrap up please.
Okay, I will. Okay, I'm sorry. There should be a requirement that they present a cost of ownership projection along with the budget for the building so that the school system knows what it's getting into in terms of maintenance, and intelligent decisions are made to, you know, of upfront costs versus long-term maintenance costs.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? If anybody else wants to speak, can you please line up with the mic just so I have an idea of where we are? I don't cut anybody off.
Amy Crawford, 146 Lawrence Road. Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Tidal. My name is Amy Crawford. I am a Riverfield parent and also serve as the PTA president of our school. As we begin the process of our school's extension and alteration, I ask for your continued support and efficiency with respect to our building project. In our current economic times, we are aware that budget dollars are scarce and that the prioritization of efforts is required. We thank you for your support of the Riverfield School renovations and have confidence that prioritizing this project is fair, necessary, reasonable, and equitable. I, along with a parent standing in support of this statement, hope to convey our constructive, positive intentions as we work towards seeing our project to fruition. We understand the road ahead and are eager to work together with you. While we would like to move expeditiously, we are appreciative of your thoroughness and will see you on the 13th.
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. Very good. You're efficient. We like that.
Appreciate your efficiency.
All right.
I'm sure we'll be seeing you at many meetings.
Exactly. We know the Sherman parents well.
That's right. That's right. I see a Sherman parent.
Open board comment. Mr. Liu.
I would just like to say again that where, again, the advantages of presenting something at one meeting and then getting it to vote at the next meeting is situations like this where public and all of us get a chance to put out ideas that maybe not all of us thought about. And I just think it's, it's something that I would like to request respectfully, that we have as a regular thing, that we used to do like clockwork, where we are presented with the things, with the issues first, and we are given the time to then vote, to look through it more than just the three days, three business days that we normally get, and that at the, at the next meeting then, we get to vote on it.